Good evening. Welcome to the October 11th, 2023 School Committee Meeting. Everyone is present with the exception of Ms. Burns.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have our Wilmington Middle School student representatives. Please come forward and introduce yourselves and welcome.
Hi, I'm Victoria Inge. Yearbooks for the 2023-2024 school year are on sale. Parent and guardians have already received an email with all pertinent information, including the links to purchase. Yearbooks are being offered at a reduced price of $38 until the end of 2023, and will go up to $48 after that. Sales will conclude in February.
I'm Georgia, and the Wilmington Middle School World Culture Club has their first speaking theme for Hispanic Heritage Month. I beg gracias to Casablanca and Wilmington, the generous nation for Great Saker Tuesday. Next up, students will be saying bonjour while they celebrate the culture of France.
Student Council has started the year off in full swing. Students are already gearing up for the first school dance of the year. On November 22nd, Wilmington Middle School, in conjunction with the Student Council and the Wilmington Middle School PAC, will be hosting the 6th grade Halloween Dance. The dance is from 5 to 7, and will have snacks, drinks, music, and games. There will be prizes awarded for costumes that are most creative, scariest, funniest, and best group. Tickets will be sold during the 6th grade lunch from October 30th to November 2nd, and all are encouraged to attend.
The WMS Drama Club is proud to announce this year's winter production as The Little Mermaid. Auditions will run from November 2nd to November 8th. Can't wait to catch this performance. On October 12th, 8th grade orchestra members will be traveling to Boston Symphony Hall to watch the fantastically talented Yo-Yo Ma rehearsal. What a wonderful experience for our orchestra students.
Students are excited to be part of the after-school sports program here at Wilmington Middle School. We have kicked off the 2023-2024 school year with thrilling games of dodgeball and mat ball. Students especially enjoy it when the teachers join for our dodgeball tournament. Stay tuned for future upcoming events and tournaments.
The robotics club is already laying a foundation for the center stage competition later this year. Students are planning and making designs for the robots, assembling 3D printers, and creating strategies for the big event. It's impressive that these students will compete with students from all over Massachusetts, most of which are high schoolers. Go Cats!
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the committee? Thank you, Georgia. Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quirk, for coming. All right, moving to our consent agenda. We're beginning with the approval of minutes from September 27th, 2023, regular meeting. Motion by Mr. Fenely and second by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? And that is unanimous. And then we have approval of minutes of the October 5th, 2023 School Committee Meeting. I have a motion by Mr. Samaha, second by Mr. Turner.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Sir?
Yeah, just one passage that was written on the 10-5 meeting. It said, "Dr. Mercaldi stated that the core structure of the district places a burden on the transportation system. He looked at surrounding school districts' towns' transportation data as a comparison. He believes the district needs to focus on a long-term plan to determine needs before any school buildings are consolidated." That last sentence, I'd like to change it to say, "He believes the district needs to focus on a long-term plan to determine needs including future school building consolidation." So when I said it, I was a little bit more, "I believe we need to look at consolidation," not... The way I read it, it got captured in the minutes, was, "I don't think we should look at consolidation at all." So if the committee's okay with making that change.
Okay, if there's no objection, we will make that change to the minutes. And with that change, all in favor?
Who's second?
It was actually...
I first, second.
I think it was the other one round. Jay was the motion, and Stephen was the second. All right, so that is approved unanimously. Next, we have warrants, so Grants 8 and 9 revolving 14 and 15, Local 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27, and Food Service 11, 12, 13, and 14. So a motion by Dr. Bryson and second by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Then we have Circuit Breaker 5 and 6. Motion by Mr. Samaha, second by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Payroll for October 11th, 2023. Motion by Mr. Fenely, second by Mr. Turner. All in favor? And that is unanimous. And then we have Special Education 10 and 11. Motion by Dr. Bryson, second by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? And that is also unanimous. And that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brett?
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. There are four items that are under the report this evening, all of which are included, items are included to accompany these in the packet, and I'll go through these briefly in order. First, great news, a shout out to the Wilmington High School. You will note both a letter as well as a copy of certificate from the Massachusetts Special Olympics Association, who recently reached out to Principal Gendron here at WHS and shared the great news that they are honoring and declaring Wilmington High School a 2022-2023 Special Olympics Massachusetts Unified Champion School. That status is really through their association's identification of organizations that embrace diversity, promote equity, and empower students to be change advocates. And certainly for those that know our efforts and participation, particularly at the high school with the celebration and events every year, certainly well-deserved and a great, a great shout out to the collective efforts of so many students, but certainly so many staff and community members that make the event each year annually possible. So great news, and I just wanted to bring that to our community and, of course, school committee's attention. The next item is school tours and an update related to our Massachusetts School Building Authority project with the Wildwood School. There continues to be a real ramp-up of activity that is taking place, not only with our educational visioning and the considerable work through the time and engagement of many in our community, but more recently, we had almost 25 individuals who, representing Wilmington, if you will, went out to tour some recently completed elementary school projects. The memo that is accompanying this item identifies the two dates that we sent folks out, and that included last week on October 3rd and October 4th. You can see the members who went. This was an open call for invitations that was extended to members of the Wildwood Building Committee, the Educational Visioning Group, as well as our town governing boards. We had a number of people who, Ms. Scott, Ms. Hollerin, Ms. Carrera, Dr. Carrera, and Ms. Bissel, who are all members of the Wildwood Building Committee, who also attended these tours. They visited an elementary school in Westboro and Northbridge on Tuesday, the 3rd of October, and then on Wednesday, the 4th, a school in Acton Boxborough, in Lexington, and in Lincoln. And the purpose of these tours is to go and see firsthand what new or contemporary school, elementary school in this case, construction can look like, and bring back those ideas to share with the Wildwood Building, School Building Committee, and really try and lay out for our community how we might compare or contrast from what we currently offer in terms of instructional space and what can be realized in contemporary school construction. A full report, including pictures, I'm not sure if there are videos, but there will be absolutely, there are a ton of pictures floating around, will be compiled into a presentation that will be shared with this committee and all of the other committees in town. The target date will be the first part of November for that. So I can pause there, I'm sorry I didn't, for the first item, and happy to take questions if members have.
Mr. Fenely?
Just for folks who maybe haven't followed the process completely, can you talk, just for a minute, Dr. Brand, a little bit about why Doran Whittier chose these particular facilities for the visits? Was it comparable sizes, newer construction, right? I know he sort of started to allude to it, but why these buildings?
I think, well, one, first off, was geography and just trying to group them together. Each of these tours was largely a full day, even though, you know, the collection of three, for example, they're all sort of close to this area, relatively speaking. But, you know, with travel time and each tour taking, I think there was about an hour and a half where they're about accommodated. So geography was one. Two, these are schools that I believe were completed in the last three years or so, so their time period, and they're elementary schools. So, you know, there was, I think there were more that, I know that there were more that could be chosen throughout the state. Just, they, they had, either between our owner's project manager, who is SMMA, or Doran Whittier, they had knowledge of these schools, and they thought that they would be good examples, exemplars or examples for us to visit.
Thank you. Perfect.
Moving on to Item C, the 2023-24 Enrollment Report. We, again, it's at this time that we traditionally bring forward to the committee's attention a snapshot of what our enrollment looks like. As members of the committee, I know are aware, October 1st is a key date with the Department of Education. That's the date in which school districts throughout the Commonwealth basically go on official record, on record, and certify their enrollment with the state. That, of course, is a very important source of a lot of what's to come, including ultimate funding to the respective towns. This is a document that I have used at least last year, perhaps the year prior. There's a lot of information on here, as well as accompanying information as backup to this item. But just to bring to your attention what this is looking like. So these are, it's fair to say, these are the unofficial numbers. They haven't been certified by the Department of Ed, but this reflects what we have submitted to them. The graph, or the chart, I'm sorry, shows you an overview of the total enrollment broken down by, at the elementary levels and then middle school and high school, going back to fiscal year 14. You can see the adjustments that have taken place and taken shape over the course of the year, the years there, and then leading up to the far right-hand side, fiscal year 24, which of course is what this year is that we are in. You can see that the overall change from fiscal year 23, last year to this year, is, if my math is correct, 25 students in total, pre-K to 12. And, but, but of course, you can see on the larger trend where the enrollment has gone since fiscal year 14, of which was a peak of 3,522, and currently this year sitting at 2,761 students. And then further on in the memo, you can see what I think are some of the highlights. And I do want to point out one that certainly jumped out at me, and that is the overall retention rate of students from 8th to 9th grade. We obviously have, we've had quite a bit of conversation, both at this table as well as others, around what the overall high school enrollment is here in Wilmington and how that has declined over the years. I think I'd first point out that our overall decline has been happening district-wide again, and I think that that's, again, important to point out for anyone who's watching this. This, this is a trend that is happening throughout the entire state. We talked about this more last year, for sure. Not just COVID-related, but this was a downward trend that was starting before COVID. That's number one. But number two, the keying in on specifically how many students in our 8th grade make their way across town, literally, to the 9th grade. And you can see what that enrollment looks like going into this year, with a total of 71% of our 8th grade students who are here in these halls in the school that we sit right now. You can see the, historically, going back to fiscal year 14, that that retention rate, that's the term that we use for that, has ebbed and flowed considerably over the, over the course of the last 10 years. 61% last year, 52% the year before, but then fiscal year 20, 79% multiple years before that, after some dips, 81. So it's, it is all over the place, and I think that that's, that is important to point out. And then the other thing, you'll see the reference points there. Last year, just two neighboring districts, out of curiosity, I was interested in what their retention rate is, and I, just random selection of Bill Rick and Tewksbury, no particular reason except they're nearby communities, and their also, their retention rates there. We don't have the fiscal year 24 number yet, simply because it's not available on the Department of Ed's website, but we'll update that when we have it. There's also the backup information that you'll see with this item, and with all of that, happy to pause if you have any questions.
Mr. Turner?
So thank you very much for the information, a very important update. Two things, one, I do think Bill Rick and Tewksbury are particularly useful. I'm very glad you selected them. They're the two schools we, districts who mirror most with Shawshank Tech. And so having them as a point of reference is really useful, as opposed to the other two schools. There are other schools outside of the tech. And the other piece that I thought was most interesting is if you look at the backup detail, over the last 15 years, the average retention rate for 8th to 9th is 71%, which is exactly where we landed this year. Obviously, we would prefer slightly higher, back in towards the higher 70s, but it's, we're back where we were. I know there was a great deal of concern a few years ago about where we were, and so I think it's a credit to some of the changes that have happened already in the district, particularly the relationship between the high school and middle school. So I'm very, very happy to see that. I think it's a really good indicator.
And if I may, and just, and thank you for pointing that out, you know, we also have, as I think everyone who's tracking this is aware, we have a smaller class, for sure, that has entered here in the 9th grade this year. So that's obviously going to impact the overall enrollment here. But if this retention rate resembles or mirrors this, this new rate, we, you know, we have a, we are going to have classes that are going to be forthcoming, that are going to be certainly larger than the 9th grade. The retention rate, as you know, is very high through the elementary grades and through into the middle school. So this number is lower for sure right now for the high school, but all things will point to that rising again in the not-too-distant future.
Other questions or comments on enrollment for it? Matty?
I just want to say that there has been a lot of great programs and things coming around, trying to get the middle schoolers to come to the high school. Like now we have clubs going over to meet them and just try and build a relationship, which I think is definitely going to be helping things.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, and I, I think that that certainly will as well, so.
Mr. Mercaldi?
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. I found it really interesting to go back and look at all the historical data, back to like 20, 1998, 1999 in the report, and just seeing like how the student populations have been flowed. Question I have, and I think you alluded to it, though, the overall decline we're seeing in the district enrollment, that's something that's kind of statewide as well, right?
Indeed.
Just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, absolutely, and there's been, there's been a fair bit of attention to that that started before the, before the pandemic. Certainly, it was amplified by the pandemic, again, not just Wilmington, but statewide. I don't want to throw at numbers, I forget exactly what they are, but there's certainly that, that data that can be found, and I can dig into that further if there's interest by the committee.
Bryson?
You have more?
Go ahead. I have one more.
Go ahead.
All right. And then I think just some for the committee to be aware of, and also for the administration too. You know, we keep hearing, in terms of like the school building plan and everything, about we're getting all these new developments in town, is, you know, trying to anticipate maybe in the future, okay, we're getting all these new housing developments, how they may infect enrollment or not. And I imagine it's very difficult right now to even take a guess because we don't even know what all these developments look like, right?
Right, I mean, do you want to speak?
If I could, in the MSBA project for the Wildwood, Woman Street in North, the initial projections were received from the MSBA, and we went back to them, and a couple things, one, the breakdown of students from a total number that would go to those schools versus the Bautwell, Shawshank, and West. They, we analyzed that with them, and it changed the enrollment for the Wildwood, Woman Street in North. But in addition to that, we looked at a couple of potential housing developments in apartment buildings, and we had put, the town had put information together, submitted to the MSBA, and they actually increased our enrollment for those, you know, pre-KK, pre-K to 3, and pre-K to 5. Because of that, they added, you know, 20 students to this grade configuration, 15 to that, 30 to that. So we do have the opportunity to, with what we know. What you don't know is difficult, but the MSBA did take into account what we had information on.
That, that's great to hear, because, you know, we're making this plan for five years down the line, and these developments will come online, so that's, that's really great. Thank you. That's all my questions.
So just back to the retention from middle school to high school, 10% higher than last year, which is great. And I think we have ideas about why, but are we collecting any, any information from those who are here? Like, why did you choose Wilmington High? Why, I mean, did the clubs going over matter? I mean, I know we can't find out if that really made a difference, but why, why this class, why this year? Why are we 10% higher than last year? I think we, can we find out?
We can certainly try. We have, do we have, we have not, at least not to my knowledge, have we not done so at this juncture, but I could be, that could be incorrect too. But I think the, you know, the Counseling Department, I know, tries regularly to gather information, and it's not always possible. I know some always wonder, you know, what, what might be a motivating factor for a family or a student to choose an outside, you know, school outside of the district. And sometimes there's success with that effort, sometimes there's not. But certainly, I think it does, this opportunity here is before us to try and gather that information. So it's something that I can talk to Principal Gendron about.
Yes, Dr. Bren?
And when we're collecting that data, do you know when students transfer back in from Shawshank Tech, which I know a few students have in this particular year? I'm sure it happens every year, but do we, do we find out why? Do we ask those questions? Just so that when we're talking to people about the decline or the increase, we can say, we have some data to show that this is one of the reasons why students are choosing us over some of the other places?
We do, so certainly that data is, those, those students returning is known. That is number one. I think it, I know it's anecdotal through discussion with students or families in terms of the factor or factors that might be bringing them back, so to speak, to Wilmington, but I can also explore that in terms of what, I have a sense of that, but I would only be speculating right now on that, but we can share that.
That'd be great, thank you.
I want to also point out that Massachusetts is losing population. So there's sort of a large meta-issue just for the state as a whole that, you know, from the, you know, even, and even in just the last couple of years, that, you know, the, the rate of population loss in Massachusetts has, you know, increased since it was even, you know, five or six years ago, in addition to fewer families choosing traditional public schools for, for education. So for, for all of those reasons, there are simply fewer students enrolled in public schools in Massachusetts than there were, you know, five years, six years ago, because of both of those factors.
I'll just, I'll just add on to that. One of the other things that, this is more of a comment that, that I sort of found is, there's actually been, you know, we're thinking about what school, you know, when a student chooses to attend public schools or not public schools, you know, private schools. You know, that, that our average of students attending public schools has actually gone, gone down over the past, like, 10, 15 years, at a rate that's a little bit higher than what we see in, in surrounding communities and in the state as a whole. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up too is sort of, not that I know for a fact, but the, the median household income in Wilmington has risen at a much higher rate. It, it, over the past 10 years, it rose like, you know, somewhere close to like 40% between now and like 2011. And I think when you look at higher income, you know, towns with, get, you know, have higher incomes, they have more money to spend on private education. I think that could be one of the reasons too. A lot of people talk about the changing face of Wilmington, so I think that's another factor that's involved with all this as well.
All right?
Okay.
And last item?
And the last item is 2023-24 School Improvement Planning. There's a memo that I provided with you, for you, sorry, on school improvement plans. Our thinking is shifting, my thinking is shifting with our principals around bringing those to, to your attention. There was a deliberacy to try and hold off a little bit with the request for principals to generate those plans this year, specifically because of where we were at with our overall strategic plan. It will forever be my thought and belief that what's important is a close and clear connection between individual school improvement plans and that of the district. They should be tightly linked, and, and our effort is continuing along that pathway. And so I'd ask principals to hold off until we had the final plan approved, which obviously you know that we do now. And so with that, what I'm proposing is a, a little bit of a delay than perhaps normally what we would have for the generation of these plans in the presentation to you for approval. You can see it's a memo outlines that I'm also suggesting that schools are allowed to generate a two-year school improvement plan, so that would be for this year as well as next. The, the breakdown of the goals there, and again, pointing out the, the expectation that those will be closely linked to some elements of our strategic plan. The timeline that I'm proposing, you can see, is into December, so probably about a month, give or take, a little bit later than has been the case in the past few years. You can see the request to have those plans to my office by the end of, by the end of November, with the elementary plans presented to you on the December 6th meeting. Secondary plans, middle school and high school, presented on December 20th, with a mid-plan, school improvement plan update scheduled for May 22nd, and then June 12th, respectively, for secondary and elementary. So really just wanted to bring that to your attention, share with you what the thinking is on, on our work with the principals. They have started their work and will continue, obviously, again, now that the strategic plan is in place. So without having to take any questions or comments or, or feedback on school improvement plans.
Mr. Samaha?
Thank you for this. I, I appreciate the information, and I like the fact that it is being tied, you're trying to, you know, be strategic about getting them tied to the strategic plan. I think, I think the two years, I think, makes a lot of sense. I know in schools, a lot of people tend to think year to year, and the, you know, the end of the school year is sort of the goal. I think when you think of it as, as two years, you're, you find you're investing more, more time into that and more, and more effort, I guess I would say. One of my questions is, how, in, in these plans, how similar are the plans between similar schools? So like similar grade configurations? So like, how close is the Bautwell and the Wildwood plans aligned? You know, Woburn and Shawshank, and then North and West?
Do you want to?
Sure. At the elementary grades bands, like last year, they went through that process of planning those goals together and knowing how important it is that we have consistency and alignment across all sides of town. So they've asked to be able to continue that model this year, so they'll be working, actually, I believe, next Friday. They have time carved out to start to map that out. One of the notes in the memo you'll see is that one of their goals should be specific to the results of their culture and climate survey, so that would be, all will have a goal related to that, but that will really be very specific and unique to their building. But for the other piece, the other two goals, they will likely be similar with different, you know, might be slight differences based on school, but overall, similar goal ideas.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
All right.
The superintendent's report, and brings us to public comment. Mr. Fenely?
All right, thank you. As always, some public comments submitted in advance of the meeting that were in the packet that I know we've all had a chance to review. One, one individual signed up in advance, so we'll start there. Reminder, please, if you would, state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. So with that, first up, Christine Anderson. Christine, are you here?
Yes, I am here.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Christine Anderson, Seven Kenwood Ave. Over the past few years, I've watched a lack of attention to the operational functions of the schools combined with deteriorating buildings, fans falling from ceilings, water leaks, condensation on floors leading to closed stairwells, closures due to lack of air conditioning, and even more concerning, oversight of accommodations and IEPs. They have eroded my children's belief in your educational setting. They spend all day, every day in these settings. Do you not think that they deserve better than this? When I told my son after your meeting on October 5th that the bus likely won't get him to school on time because there's nothing they can do, he laughed and said, "Of course not." When my daughter had a half-day of school on September 27th, the bus was lost and didn't know where Kenwood Ave was. The driver had pulled over and yelled at the kids for directions. She's 10, and her sister on the same bus is eight. When they got home that day, we talked, and my 10-year-old already had a plan for what, when this happens again. She said, "Don't worry, if they don't know where Kenwood Ave is, I'll have him drive back to the north and direct him from there." My eight-year-old has no homework. The late start times on the north side of town, combined with the bus issues, are prohibiting teachers from giving these kids homework. What did you mean when you said where we need to be? This was a question posed by the school committee when Dr. Brand mentioned the September 13th meeting that we could make improvements to the bus transportation to be where we need to be. In the last meeting on October 5th, you made changes to school start times and obtained an additional bus. Lisa noted there was nothing she could do about some of the bus... Lisa noted there was nothing she could do about some of the buses, and no further improvements could be made. Dr. Brand also noted that back in May, there were lengthy bus routes and lengthy times in which children were waiting for buses. Five years ago, my daughter was in kindergarten, and the bus wasn't getting her to school on time. I got a copy of the bus contract, and there was a clause requiring the bus company to get the children to school on time. I wonder if that article is no longer present in your current contract. If transportation has been broken for a while, why was this not addressed during the start time conversations? I'm also concerned about the financial state and liability if you put our district in. When proposing new start times, you said we couldn't get additional buses. Now we have a new bus in November. You had ARP funds that you could have used for a bus, but you didn't use it for that. In fact, the town hired a consultant to manage the ARP funding from the government. Two years ago, numerous people came out to vote for the Wildwood project and again to support the proposed school budget when that budget was facing cuts. You keep reminding us, Dr. Brand, that transportation is not required to be offered. Let me remind you that parents pay taxes in this town. So we are paying for this as well as other school operations. Our children are entitled to an education, and we expect you to meet the time on learning requirements. The time on learning and transportation are now intertwined. You should be ashamed of the burden you've placed on these children, teachers, staff, and parents. Stop trying to make small fixes. You have failed. Map out opportune learning times for each school based on age, set district-wide goals to achieve equity, and then figure out how many buses are needed. I've given up on an exceptional learning environment. I'm instead pleading with you for an adequate one, with the required time on learning and the staff that can adhere to these IEPs. Back on the back to the question on September thirteenth, is this where you want this district to be? This question appears to be lost upon you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to make public comment? Please.
My name's Elise Warren, One Eleven Federal Street. So according to the Mayo Clinic, I was looking at sleep times for children. My I got an email yesterday afternoon saying that, starting today, my five-year-old needs to be out for the bus at six fifty-five in the morning. If any of you have had the privilege of trying to get a five-year-old out the door in a timely manner, you can understand my frustration. I can't get breakfast into him. He's exhausted. If the age group from three to five are to be getting ten to thirteen hours of sleep and six to twelve, nine to twelve hours of sleep, high school kids requiring only eight to ten hours of sleep, why are our kindergarten kids the ones going to school the earliest? I understand that we need to get everybody through the day, et cetera, but when he's needing to be on the bus before seven o'clock in the morning, when his day starts at seven forty, I have to wake him up before six o'clock in the morning. He's in bed by seven fifteen, seven thirty the latest, and it's gonna be next to impossible to get him out of bed when we do the time change, when we roll the clocks back, and it is pitch black before six o'clock in the morning. He has said to his teacher, why do we have to be here so early? I'm curious if there have been increased outbursts, behavioral issues in the kindergarten kids having to get up so early because they don't even in on the weekends, sleeping in for him is seven o'clock because he's up so early for school. I, like I said, I'm curious if there have been an increase in behavioral issues with the adjustment counselors needing to interfere, not interfere, interact more with these kindergarten kids after they've been up before six o'clock in the morning to be fed, dressed, teeth brushed, out the door. I appreciate you guys and your time and your volunteering to do all this. It's just, what are we gonna do? What is the plan going forward? Kindergarten kids should not be out at the bus before seven o'clock in the morning. There's just no reason for it. When our high school kids need to get ready for the next step, whether that's college classes or out in the workforce, I mean, they're not starting that much later, but it would make more sense that if they're gonna be taking a step into the adult world, they need to be ready to be able to do that, being able to get up, get themselves dressed, ready to a place, whether that's a college classroom or their job. I just, what are we gonna do for these kids? Because what we're doing now isn't working. Our children are suffering. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Schulte, twenty Frederick Drive. I just I was here two weeks ago. I wasn't able to catch the one last week. But since then, I just want to say that the spreadsheet, the Google spreadsheet is not being consistently loaded for the buses, which is frustrating because that's really the one thing we have, since the app is also not working, the Find My Kid app. On Friday, my son's bus didn't load until three fifty-five, and he's the first stop, so he still got home after four, which I know the goal is theoretically to get all the kids home by four. We're really far from that. But again, it's really frustrating as someone has to take a two-year-old out to sit on the side of a busy road, waiting for a half an hour sometimes. And I just started, I'm just switching to picking up my kid. We're still gonna do it in the morning because that is working right now. But soon it's gonna be getting dark at like four, four fifteen, and inclement weather. So that's just been my choice, and luckily, I can do that. But again, I just want to say that the communication is still just not lacking, and it's still seems like that just really needs to be fixed because there's still no way for us to plan on the parents, and and the kids are still just waiting in front of the school. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Jones, Sixth Backy Road. I was here a couple weeks ago. Turned out actually really good. I had a great meeting with Ms. Byrne. She's not here tonight. I came into last meeting very upset, not understanding, listened to everybody at the meeting, met with her, and came up with a much better understanding of what you all go through. I respect everything you guys do for us, whether I think it's right, wrong, or indifferent. I respect that you're here. I'm very disappointed that we have a lot less parents here tonight because it's not bus transportation related. We need to have apparent participation in all of these meetings, whether it's something that you're upset about or not, because it's all in the best interest of the kids. So we need to get that together. To fix this format, I know is great because you need to do this as a committee. But what else can we do to get the school committee, parents, teachers, principals, et cetera, get everybody together in some sort of general discussion? Obviously, you're not gonna get a lot of parents involved because they're not here now. But how can we get some teachers and some other people involved to have a general discussion about what's best for our children? Something that's moderated by somebody, whether it's you, Mr. Ragsdale, to where everybody has a chance to talk, the educators, the parents, the school committee, because everybody wants what's best for our children. Most of you have children in the school system. So not only are you working to help us, you're working to fix these issues. We're all in this together. We need a little bit more than that. We're talking about these new buildings being built in town, these new structures, retention. Well, how does that retention and keeping kids in school, how does that affect the bus system that we have going on right now? Is that gonna make it worse or better? Obviously, this year's plan did not work to the best of everybody's abilities or their intentions. We can't keep fighting on what went wrong, but how can we work together to make it better? We cannot make it better for this year. We have to understand that. We can try to put Band-Aids on it to make it better. How can we make it better for next year and the years going forward? If this is the plan, we want to go forward with this start time. How can we make it better for everybody from kindergarten through twelfth grade? And let's start working on that for next year and the following years because this year's gonna be lost on this. And I get that you're doing the best job. We're making our efforts to fix start times. Does that help everybody? No. It makes some kids start a little bit later, just to get them into class on time. But what can we do going forward? Because let's start, let's start looking at the next few years going forward. Let's get Ms. Freiter some help. She cannot do this on her own. Does she need an administrative assisting to help her answer these questions? Get these bus routes to run on schedule before school starts. Not saying it's anybody's fault because you didn't, nobody understood. Just work together, school committee, teachers, parents, everybody, because we're all in this for the best interest of our children. That's why I'm here again. It's not easy for me to get out, to come here on a Thursday night meeting. I've made the last three, even that that one on Zoom.
I'm gonna ask you to bring your comment to a conclusion.
Honestly, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're moving to new business, and first item is MASC resolutions. So the MASC, MAS joint conference is coming up on November, I think, eighth to the tenth in that neighborhood. And we have to appoint a delegate to the delegate assembly with instructions on how to vote on these resolutions. The way that we have generally done this, as a reminder, for the past couple of years, is rather than just having a discussion on every resolution, to go through them all and simply see who wants to hold them for discussion. So we kind of treat it as a consent agenda. If no one wants to hold it or have any discussion, then we just, you know, approve it. And anything that that gets held, we come back to discuss and then and then hold a vote on that. So I'm just going to read through the resolutions. I'm not going to go through all of the whereas statements. Yes, Stephen?
One quick point of clarification. There's at least one that's not directly applicable. Should we simply pass over that one?
That's one of the well, if that, then that's something to discuss, to hold for discussion. Because if it's not applicable or an area in which it, we can pass over. We don't, we don't have to vote yea or nay on some of these. We can take no action is one of the options that we have. And if some of these are matters that either don't affect us, or we feel that we have no real expertise or ability to choose wisely on what is the best policy, we can also decide to take no action. So not rather than going through all the whereas rationales, I'll simply go through the actual ends of the resolutions themselves. There is also a resolution here related, literally called related to MCAS, Resolution Seven, and in compliance with the Conflict of Interest Law, and because of my employment with DUCY in the Student Assessment Office, I will not be participating in the discussion or the vote on Resolution Seven. All right. So Resolution One, full stable funding for Metco. And the actual conclusion of the resolution, therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon, I hate the way this is formatted, you have to like jump up and down everywhere, calls upon the governor and the legislature to create a stable funding structure to support Metco and its partner districts that fully funds the support provided by Metco and the cost of providing services delivered by Metco's partner districts. Would anyone like to hold that for discussion?
More of a question?
Sure.
Sorry, new guy question. Are we part of Metco?
No.
I just was kind of curious about that.
We are not. All right. So we'll treat that as a clarifying question and not a hold. All right. So.
Do you want a hard topic to work from? Is that easier for you?
That might be. Thanks. All right. Second is regional investigations and recommendations for transportation bidding procedures. The final resolution, therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees prevail upon the Office of the State Auditor to investigate the bidding practices of school transportation providers and to present such findings and recommendations as they may be necessary to contain costs and make more efficient transportation services available for public schools. Would anyone like to hold this for discussion? All right. We'll approve that. Number three is regional transportation. Moving to the end of that, this is gonna be a little bit long. Therefore, be it resolved that in such cases where a pupil reside is greater than one and one-half mile from the school of attendance measured by a commonly traveled route, the Commonwealth reimbursement does not fully cover the amount expended for such transportation. The regional school district may allow pupils to opt out of such transportation or may charge a fee that in aggregate may not exceed the differential between the amounts expended for furnishing transportation and the Commonwealth reimbursements. Be it further resolved that the MASC encourage legislature to modify MGL Title Twelve, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen C, with the aforementioned proposed language or alternative, and remove the period to provide regional districts the ability, if so desired, to charge a transportation fee that in aggregate cannot exceed the differential. All right. I'm gonna actually stop at this point. This is in the packet, so the committee has read this. Anyone in the watching who is who has been, their curiosity has been piqued by this resolution can can read the final aspect of it. Would we like to, anyone like to hold this resolution? All right. So we will hold that. Resolution Four, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC recommends that all districts adopt the position of DEI coordinator to work towards an anti-racist school system. All right. We'll hold that. Resolution Five, Mass. School Building Authority. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to amend MGL Chapter Seventy-B, Section Seven, by removing the eight hundred million-dollar cap. And be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts School Building Authority to reinstate the accelerated repair program for twenty twenty-four applications. And be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to allow public preschools to be included in the accelerated repair program and core program. Would anyone like to hold that for discussion? So we will approve that. Resolution Six, School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Enforcement and Penalties. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to enact legislation to pass into law the ability for cities and towns to install on all school buses live digital video detection monitoring systems for the purpose of enforcing violations against the owner of a motor vehicle whose vehicle fails to stop for a school bus when required to do so by law. And be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Massachusetts Legislature to enact legislation raising the fine for passing a stopped school bus to a significant schedule of fines as penalty, whether witnessed by a police officer or recorded by a digital video detection monitoring system. Would anyone like to hold this for discussion? All right. We will approve that. Resolution Seven, Related to MCAS. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC urges Massachusetts to develop a wider, more consensus-built strategy for an evaluation system with meaningful input from legitimate stakeholders, that MASC urges the state legislature to launch a comprehensive evaluation to investigate the extent of biases pertaining to MCAS testing and make these results public, that MASC urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately, that MASC urges Massachusetts to develop an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS test. Would anyone like to hold this for discussion? And then lastly, Resolution Eight, Safe Storage of Firearms. This one has a lot of whereas's. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC recommends all districts to urge their superintendent and staff to create an appropriate communication to parents and guardians that explains the importance of secure firearm storage to protect children and teens from unauthorized access to unsecured firearms and their legal obligations consistent with Massachusetts Safe Storage Law. Be it further resolved that MASC urges other communities to work with their local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and nonprofit organizations to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents and guardians of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes and vehicles. And we'll hold that. All right. So we have approved Resolutions One, Two, Five, and Six, and we're gonna return to Three, Four, Seven, and Eight for discussion. So let's begin with Resolution Three. So let's begin with Resolution three, regional transportation. Mr. Turner?
Move that we pass over that?
You mean that we take, that we take, that we take no action?
Thank you, yeah.
On that, is there a second for that? All right.
So, question?
Yeah, we'll come, we'll come to that, so.
I'll second it.
All right, so motion, motion by Mr. Turner, second by Mr. Samaha, discussion.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand. So when I read this, it's kind of for districts more that are kind of more regional, so that districts have more central western mass and everything like that, not so much like our district and more the smaller eastern mass districts?
For any regional school system.
Okay.
So different, even local.
It would be.
Yes, yeah.
Concord, Carlisle, okay. All right, thank you.
Other discussion?
I mean, I, I don't think that this, I think when we're looking at these mask, MASC resolutions, even if it doesn't apply to us as a district, sometimes I can see where we might want to say something, you know, in support of other districts. This was, I don't really know if I understand what that means. I read the thing like 10 times and I'm like, I don't know if I really know what this means. It's incredibly wordy and it doesn't really apply to us, so I'm in favor of taking no action on it.
All right, and on top of that, I have voted for plenty of resolutions that don't apply specifically to our district because I support what they do. And these are obviously resolutions that apply beyond any individual district. That is what they are designed to, to do. But again, in a situation in which I don't really understand the issue well enough and the complexity of the, the topic, that I don't know what the right choice would be or what the trade-offs are around the action that they're proposing. Any other comments? All right, all in favor of taking no action on Resolution three? All right, that is unanimous. No action. All right, Resolution four, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, when I was looking at this, there was, I think the first time that I read through it, I think I read it as like a mandate that districts hire a DEI coordinator. But then when I looked back at it and I read through it a couple more times, it's actually not asking, it's not mandating that. It's sort of taking a stance and recommending that schools and school committees and school districts do this. You know, I think that, you know, in, in the country, there's a lot of pushback against DEI initiatives. So I'm in, I'm in support of this because it's not a mandate, it's rather, it's a, it's a recommendation. If it was a mandate, I would be way more hesitant about, about that because that's budgets and, and, but I think the recommendation like is an important step and sort of, you know, saying that, you know, that MASC stands, you know, for anti-racism, among other things.
Mr. Turner?
So the, I do think that as a recommendation, I definitely support it. I'd be curious as, whether they would ever seek to mandate it without funding. I always find those sorts of things interesting. And I certainly think that the interesting part today is when we look at our data just down the agenda, that that type of role can be focused on places where we see inequity. And sometimes we do our best and we try hard, but sometimes we're not closing gaps quickly enough. And having that type of role in districts can certainly put a brighter light and a better focus on, on addressing issues that we need to address. And so I, I support it and I, and I certainly think it's a, a goal we should aspire to based on, and we should, I mean, aspire to in general, but with the recommendation as well, as, as an additional way we can really try and provide the best learning environment for all our students.
Dr. Bryson?
So I agree with my colleagues and reading through this, I had the same thought initially of, oh, I would love to do this, however, budgets. And then I said, well, wait a minute, they're not actually saying that we have to, they're just saying they're recommending it. So I think there's no harm or worry in, in supporting this. And I also think we're doing quite a bit of this work already. So I think it shows as a district, we're already supporting initiatives for EDI. So I'm in support of this resolution as well.
I oppose this resolution and it's because I think that it is, even though phrased as a recommendation, it's making a, essentially a, just a blanket recommendation that does not make any allowances for the different circumstances that districts may be in, whether financial or where, where they are in working with issues of equity. And that it may not be appropriate for all districts or for any given district to, you know, put such a position in place or have a specific coordinator. And that this is something that, you know, districts will be able to, you know, make their own determinations. And again, obviously, it's not prescriptive. But even as a recommendation, I don't think that I would say that that would be necessarily the correct recommendation for all districts without, without any kind of view of what their specific needs were. Though I of course support the importance of equity efforts and doing, and equity in districts. Are there any further comments?
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
I was, yes.
I make a motion to accept resolution or to support Resolution four, diversity, equity, and inclusion.
All right, and second by Mr. Turner. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And all those opposed? And so that passes five, one with myself in opposition. That brings us to Resolution seven, related to MCAS. Mr. Fenely?
I struggled reading through this one, if I'm being honest. I, I get the intention, at least I think I do. I think, you know, up until where they are urging us to enact a moratorium on all MCAS testing effective immediately, they lost me after that. I mean, I think, is MCAS perfect? No. Does it need some work? I think you could make that argument. Is stopping it outright and not measuring any progress or data until you figure it out the right solution? No. So me, I, I'm in opposition to this one.
Mr. Turner?
It kind of, it kind of goes to the very next point on our agenda. We're looking at the data because we do think it is important and it is telling us something. Now, it may not be telling us enough and it may not be telling us in the right way. And I know there are stories of kids who don't care and don't cry, and there are stories of kids who can't, and obviously there are kids for whom high-stake testing is inappropriate. And so we know all that and I, I agree with Mr. Fenely, but the idea of not having some appropriate measure, and I, I think it's fair to suggest that MCAS is not a great measure. But if we don't have anything, then are we going to need to figure out a different way to measure our own and then spend the time and effort to find another tool for that gap until the state legislature takes the time and effort to figure out a better option? So I, I'm hesitant because of that exact same point of, right now, right now, it's what we have and, and I certainly would like something better. I don't disagree with that. So perhaps approving it with an amendment to strike that one bullet might be an appropriate thing. I don't know how the rest of you feel on that, but that might be where I would head with it.
Mr. Samaha?
I support this resolution 100%, including the moratorium on, on MCAS. I understand that MCAS is sort of this requirement, it's a small snapshot of learning. Some of the data can be useful, but not all of it. And I think, I think that the way the MCAS is used across the state is incredibly problematic. It has rewards and punishments. And punishments of things like state takeovers that don't do anything. Everything is still the same, right? Working in, you know, in, in Boston Public Schools, there are schools that have been taken over and run by private companies, and they do absolutely no better or worse. And there's countless districts across the state who are facing the same thing. MCAS, as it's being, as, MCAS as it was conceived, was supposed to be a comprehensive, that's what they see it means, comprehensive assessment, meaning it wasn't just going to be one high-stakes test. It was going to be a wider-looking thing. But guess what? That costs a lot of money, takes a lot of time. So they narrowed it down to this test. And the test, the test itself is flawed. I think that there is lots of different ways we need to look at our students and how students can be smart. It's not just this one very narrow way. There are too many things wrong with MCAS for us to continue to use it. The way that, the way that we are, it's not, I don't think it's actually measuring what our kids know and how our kids are smart. It's, it's measuring a very narrow set of students and it's telling students who excel in that area, you're doing good. And students who don't excel in that area, you're not doing so good. And it does the same thing to districts. There's lots of very, very intelligent kids. And when I say intelligence, that's not just meaning, you know, with, you know, you know, the book smart stuff. It's, it's all the different types of intelligence. And I just, I, I have a huge, 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 huge problem with MCAS. It's unfair and I totally, totally support this resolution.
Dr. Bryson?
Okay. So I support most of this resolution, except for the moratorium at this point, just because I think I worry about there being no, nothing in its place. I also, it's funny, if it said a moratorium on the high school graduation requirement, that I would approve, I would support that immediately. But here we are, going to spend the next god knows how many hours looking at MCAS data that is helping us to expose inequities and to see what we need to do differently. And so part of me is like, well, how can I sit here and spend that time and look so closely at that data, but then say, yeah, get rid of it? So I'm, I'm in a funny spot here. I completely agree with, with Jay. And it says here, you know, unjustly targeted communities with underfunded public schools for state take, I mean, I totally agree with all of this. I just, if we could, if I could just make a change to the high school graduation requirement, a moratorium on that, I would support this wholeheartedly.
Any other discussion? So Mr. Turner, it sounded like you were potentially thinking about offering an amendment to the resolution as stated?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, to think of what would be the best amendment. Dr. Bryson makes a very good point. So I'm, I'm rethinking my initial, it's still in the same sort of line, but, yeah, if proposed, we would say that the MASC urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on the graduation requirement related to MCAS testing immediately. I think I'd be, yeah, how about that as an emotion, an amendment?
Can you, all right, can you state that clearly so Tracy can get it?
Proposing that we accept, that, that we move to accept this as written, except amending the fourth bullet down to read that MASC urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on the high school graduation requirement related to MCAS testing effective immediately.
I will second, but to be clear, it's the third bullet down.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure we're all.
Excuse me, here, Jesse. Third bullet, yes, thank you.
Can I, can I add something to this?
Do you have amendment to the amendment? Well, we haven't even had a second on the amendment yet. Stephen, let me.
Good second, Jesse seconded.
He seconded after he corrected my errors.
So I, I, I like, I like the amendment and I, and I wonder if we could also add in, sort of, and I don't know exactly how to word it, but a moratorium as well on state intervention in districts. And I mean, I, because, because that's my, I, coming at this in two ways, because that's how I have to think about MCAS. I think about MCAS on an individual student basis, but also on a school, district basis, where I, I also don't like, you know, so it's not fair to the kid, but it's also not fair to districts. And I think that's part of this as well. And I think part of when they're talking about a moratorium on MCAS testing, I think if I can read into their intent is to address both those, both the kids and many of our, many districts in the state and schools in districts in states that are, in the state that are, that are, that are struggling with this, you know, including, you know, Boston Public Schools.
So.
Mr. Turner?
If I'm clear, I think I want to just, we're suggesting that we support this resolution, but we amend the third bullet to sort of enact a moratorium on the graduation requirement. And you're proposing adding a bullet that would be a moratorium on state takeovers based on MCAS results.
Yeah, so I would say state intervention.
Intervention, sure.
I, I think that, yes, that, that I could, that I could support.
Point of clarification, sorry, I probably should ask this at the end of this vote, but if memory serves, last year we did this. And then our proposed amendment was not accepted by the body. And so if we do this, I think we have to take two votes. One, how we feel about it as amended. And two, how we feel about it in the original form in the case our amendments are not accepted. So we have to give that level of guidance to the representative, right? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be appropriate because we would want the delegate to have clear instructions on what to do if it comes down to the original, uh, to the original resolution.
Going back a step, I fully support.
At a certain point, we can't anticipate any amendments that might be offered by other people, so at a certain point, you know, the delegate has to use their own judgment of the will of the committee. But that's a very, and, very predictable potential outcome, that it just comes down to the original resolution.
Just an idea, may I suggest we split the amendments into two, if that's how the mechanism of how it works? Because then I could see Jay's amendment potentially getting, you know, voted down, but then I think you can get broad consensus more on the high school graduation one at the same time. So then, at least if we add the amendment, we can get a, a partial win potentially as opposed to both of them being linked together. Does that make sense to everyone?
I agree.
So the, so Mr. Turner's amendment as changing the language of that bullet point and then adding an additional bullet point.
So we'll do three votes. One was what Jay said, you know, was adding on to what Steve said, and then Steve's original amendment, and then the original.
Well, I think, I mean, I, I think we can do this. I don't think we have to take three votes. I think we can do this as, we have an amendment to Mr. Turner's original amendment, but it, it, you know, it doesn't have to be in one bullet. Like we can say that, you know, the amendment to the amendment proposes Mr. Turner's original language and another bullet amending the resolution. But we do need to get the language for that, for that bullet. We need to, you know, to pin that down. So Jay, did you have language for that? Thinking of it as a separate, as a separate bullet?
I think Stephen.
Yeah, so if, if we, if we just take the same language that they have in the third bullet, right, Mr. Fenely, to say, and that MASC urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on state interventions based on MASC testing results effective immediately. So mirror the language, just with a different central point.
I think that is, yeah, that's, that's correct.
Just make sure it's MCAS, not MASC.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, MCAS.
Moratorium on the Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Can we have a moratorium on acronyms?
All right, so, right, so mirroring, so a second part, mirroring the language, and you said with a moratorium on state intervention based on.
Based on MCAS results.
Yes. Yes.
Effective immediately.
On just a point of clarification, by state intervention, is that meant to encompass all forms of state intervention, such as additional support or financial grants, or is it just the sense of like, state, of like, takeovers receivership that you are...
I'm, I'm speaking, I'm speaking of receivership. I mean, we should, should that, maybe that should be clarified then, because I think, I think all, I think, you know, all forms of intervention is probably, is, is, is too broad.
State intervention in the form of receivership.
So instead of state intervention, perhaps just state receivership, a moratorium on state receivership?
Yeah, thank you, that's, 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 that's more in line with what I was thinking.
Alright, so we have an amendment to the resolution and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor, and we are now just voting on the amendment, so this is to adopt the language that we've been discussing, so all in favor of adopting of the amendment language. And that is five in favor and one abstention, which is me. And so the motion, the resolution is now amended and we are now voting on the resolution as we have now amended it. And so, we had a second on that too at the beginning, alright, so all in favor of the new amended motion. And again, that is five in favor and one abstention.
Are we gonna do, are we gonna do a third vote?
I'm about to get to that.
Okay, alright, I'm sorry.
Alright, so I would entertain a motion of how to instruct our delegate in the event that, that our proposed amendment is not accepted by the delegate assembly. So, Mr. Smaha.
So I move that in the event of our motions not being approved, that the delegate vote in agreement with this resolution.
Is there a second?
As written.
Second by Dr. Bryson. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor? And again, that is five in favor and one abstention. Alright, and that brings us to Resolution Eight, Safe Storage of Firearms. Mr. Fenley.
I appreciate the focus on firearm safety, I just, with respect, I don't know that the superintendent is the right vehicle for that message. I just, like, I just don't get the full intent of this one. Gun safety, sure, that makes sense, but shouldn't it, I just, I just don't know why it's coming from the superintendent to the school community. I, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't, I just wanted to talk it through.
Mr. Smaha.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that it coming from, I think superintendent, but I think in the language, it's, it's more about superintendent sort of directing principals to, who are, you know, have the easiest access to communicating to the children in a district. I, I don't know, who, I don't know who else, who else would be the person to deliver this information to every, you know, every family in the district. And I know it's not every family because there are kids who will go to homeschool and, and private school, but, you know, I think, I, I, I definitely hear, I definitely hear what you're saying, and I struggle with this one too, because I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if that, if that's their place, but I think, and, and it's not asking for legislation on, on this, right? It's just asking schools to communicate this information. Nothing else, it's not saying that they are gonna take a step outside of their lane. I mean, I think, I think when you think about the health of, like, you know, children's health, I think this falls into that category. This is like a, a public health thing, and I think that schools, maybe not principals, maybe, school, I mean, I don't know, but I, I think that this, I get what you're saying, but I think it does fall in the lane of public schools, cause it's a, you know, it's a, it's a children's public health issue.
Mr. Turner?
Two, two different comments. One, I, I will say I was confused by portions of the resolution as written, because the, be it further resolved that MASC urges other communities to work with. I have no idea what that means in this context. I could understand if they said urges that the districts also work with local law enfor, and so that part is odd. At its base level, children die from guns too much. It is a huge problem, and when we talk about mental health of children, if we had an incident, God forbid, in our district, we would have a very wide circle of mental health trauma that we would have to deal with, and it would impact the district for years to come. So at its base level, I support this 100%. We focus on children's mental health, their wellbeing, their academic health, all those aspects, and as part of the whole child, being safe in the schools and, and being able to be effective in the schools, this is important. It's not a well word, a doc, a resolution though. So I'm struggling with it only on the wording, not the intent, so that's where I land with this one.
I also have some slightly mixed feelings about this resolution, cause while I fully support the intention of it, I wonder a little bit about the, about the effectiveness. Clearly, children getting access to improperly stored firearms is a very dangerous and terrible thing, that that's been one of the root causes of some of the terrible school shootings that have occurred in this country, as well as just being, you know, accidental discharge of the firearms. You know, we've been fortunate not to have an incident like that in, in Wilmington. So I think that there is, there is a sense of protecting our students in school by making sure that our community and our families are taking this, you know, elemental and, in fact, you know, legally binding precaution. But I do wonder if the type of person who needs to potentially hear this message is going to respond to it coming from the superintendent of schools or the school district, and if that's going to actually be, you know, an effective method of remind, like, there's, I think you have to just be a little bit, a little bit careful about unintended effects, because the first time that I read this resolution quickly, there was a little part of me that was just like, is this our business? Like, is this our lane to tell people how to, you know, store their firearms when they're already legally required to? It's like, isn't this the police department, should be making a communication like this to, you know, the public safety department, making communication like this? So I'm a little bit back and forth on that, I'm still not 100% sure where I, where I land on it, but I think it's perhaps more, more complicated than it, than it seems at first. Any other comments, or Dr. McCauley?
Yeah, I thought your comment was pretty good. Maybe we would wanna amend it where, cause there is a section about urging law enforcement agencies, which to me is more appropriate than the school administration superintendent to kind of send that communication out to the community.
Dr. Bryson?
And I, and so I, I don't disagree with, with any of my colleagues, I think I go back to Jay's point around who has the greatest access to families and who, how, who gets those emails, and I just don't know if the community, if it goes through law enforcement, if they have access to children and families the way we do. So I think it's actually just sort of, I think what it should say is, the district will work with their local law enforcement agencies and provide access through their channels to fam, like, so I hear you, it comes from the police, but I don't think they can send something out the way we can, that will then get into the hands of, of families. So I think it's more just a, a piece of, we have that, we have those emails, we have that ability, that I don't think other places, even town hall, would have access to that. Dr. Brand, am I kinda right?
May, I completely agree and also recognize that we, we, we know that we have an access to thousands of emails because of, of the leveraging of that information that we have. I mean, as you know, I obviously can't weigh in on these, but I wish that this resolution was modified along the lines of what you said there, and a strong urging, recommendation, wherever that language lies, to perhaps for school superintendents, to work closely with law enforcement and even public health, you know, is, might be somewhat unconventional, but, you know, as, as a joint message that comes out and, and leveraging the district's email access might be suggested modification.
And I think that's why it's come here, you know, I think that's the purpose, it's, how do we get this message out? And I think that, I don't think people realize, but we have greater, way greater access to families than any other, and it's like, you sit on other town boards, you're like, or you sit and you listen, you're like, oh yeah, they don't have access the way we would have had, just as, well, we didn't have access the way senior center would have access to their senior, like, I mean, I think it goes in all directions, but I think for the purpose of this, I think they're trying to support a partnership really so that they can use our channels. That's how I read it. So, though I don't disagree with what everyone's saying, but I also think, I mean, and we know that these resolutions are, are what they are, and they go to MA, but it does elicit conversation and discussion, and I think I support where this is headed. I wouldn't argue with an amendment of, of some sort if we wanted to almost remove the, therefore be it resolved, that's the first one, and then move to that second one. I mean, I would feel comfortable with that, but I'm also not opposed to saying, in its essence, sure, I support, I support this.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the idea of, you know, the superintendent partnering with local public health officials and law enforcement officials on a joint communication, where you leverage the access of the school department and, and its interest, it's not that it's a disinterested party, it's, but, but, but then you have, you bring in kind of like more of the appropriate townwide, townwide, you know, departments for a message like that. Mr. Fenley?
Yeah, so I think I'd like to move that we support this resolution, but amend it so that it reads, therefore be it resolved, that MASC recommends all districts to urge their superintendent and staff to partner with their...
Local law enforcement agencies.
Local law enforcement agencies and public health department to create an appropriate communication, and it stays the same after that. So essentially, it's just rather than, I, cause I think, Dr. Bryson, what you're saying, essentially using Dr. Brand and the, the, sort of the communication system we have to get like Chief Desmond's message out, or, you know, the school resource officer, however it works out, it's not necessarily coming from Dr. Brand, it's a collaboration, so...
Are you offering that as a motion?
Yes, yes, I am.
Alright, so a motion, second by Dr. Bryson, discussion, Mr. Smaha.
Yeah, I, I think that that's, I think that's a really good suggestion, because I also think that I would, you know, I wouldn't want to be saying, let's push this message out just from superintendent, like, it needs to be that partnership. I wanna know, what did the police think about this? What would they want in that communication? You know, because I, I mean, I don't know what, I'm, I'm sure there's things in there that they would wanna make sure are there, and if it's just saying, superintendents do it, I mean, forgive me, you know, Dr. Brand, but I don't, you know, have a background in law enforcement, do you?
And I think having, I mean, I'm thinking...
Mounted Canadian Mounted Police.
Something along the lines of this going to our wellness group, and, I mean, this idea of secure firearm storage, I mean, I think it's a, it's a rational thing to talk about and to have, to have adults talk through this together and then come up with some sort of, I think it, I mean, the stuff that you're reading here and these percentages is, you know, it's, you can't just pass over and be, okay, well, it's not our business. I mean, it's not that particular piece, is it, but the, how we inform people about proper se, I mean, not that those who don't, don't know that, but I still feel like it's something that's good, that we get into saying, secure firearm storage. Like, I feel like, I'm like, oh, I haven't really used those words before myself, and that's an important thing, I think, as parents and community members to, to understand and feel comfortable with. So if this became a topic of conversation at the wellness, I think that would be important work to do. Where the communication comes from and who, I definitely believe it has to be a partnership or come directly from law enforcement, but I don't think it's a bad idea to have this conversation in our community.
Alright, so any further discussion? Alright, so we have a vote on the amendment as stated by Mr. Fenley to the resolution, all in favor? And that is unanimous. So we voted to amend the resolution and now vote to approve the amended resolution, all in favor. Alright, and that is unanimous. And then, I think we need another third vote as well this time, so in case, if this amendment is not accepted by the delegate assembly, what do we want our delegate to do? So would someone like to offer a motion of what to do in that case?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept it as is.
Second.
Alright, motion and second, any discussion? Mr. Smaha, were you just offering?
I was just gonna say, I, I actually, I, as written, I actually don't support it because of that, that first part. I, I don't think I can, I can get behind the superintendent sending, just sending something out about secure firearm storage without collaboration with public health and law enforcement. It just seems bizarre to me, based on our discussion, that that wouldn't be, wouldn't be appropriate.
Dr. Bryson?
And I'll just go back to, I mean, just to bring us back to what these resolutions are and where they, this is not going into, this is sort of saying, this should go forward to, but this isn't becoming something that all of a sudden, we're gonna get a memo that says, oh, by the way, you need to do this, right? This is a conversation among the MASC reps, which I imagine would be pretty interesting. I mean, this is brought to us by, sorry, I closed it, but it's Framingham?
Framingham.
I mean, so Framingham brought this forward, they're gonna be people from all different communities there with their representatives, and I imagine there'll be tweaks and changes and, will we ever see this? I mean, who, who knows? I mean, David, will we ever, I don't know, but I don't think it's, we vote here and all of a sudden that becomes something, so I'm not, I don't worry so much about the word, like wording it properly.
I mean, what I think is a little, oh, Mr. Fenley?
Well, I would just add on that if it, if it goes as is written, that MASC recommends that all districts urge their superintendent to, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so MASC passes this and comes to us and says, we urge that you, as the district, do this thing, and we...
Saying no.
Do it, do it the way we discussed doing it, that we think is appropriate, so I mean, I have no problem with, I'm assuming MJ, supporting this in the, in the conference.
Yeah, I think, you think you're getting at something which I think is a little bit procedurally weird, because as a school committee, we're voting for them to recommend back to us something for us to then have the superintendent do, and so I, I think I'm along the same lines, that I think it's somewhat harmless to, you know, to approve this even as written, because we've already discussed how we think if we were to pursue such a thing in Wilmington, how we would want that to go, as evidenced by our amendment, and so I, I would be okay with it going through, even though I think, I think I don't really quite support it as it is, but at a certain point, it's just the resolution and the delegate assembly, and, and I, I would be okay with it going through as it is. Further discussion, any other ones? Alright, so all, all those in favor of authorizing our delegate to vote in favor of the resolution if the amended version we propose is not accepted, all in favor? And that is unanimous.
So can I ask a procedural question, or maybe two procedural questions? We sort of went through all of them at the beginning and kind of consented to one, two, five, and six, but I don't recall motioning, right, to, to vote for those. And did we officially appoint a delegate?
We haven't done that yet, that's next on...
Okay, that's next, sorry.
Yeah, that's next on the agenda.
Okay, so can I, can I move that we approve Resolutions one, two, five, and six as written?
Motion and second by Dr. McCauley. Any discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Fenley, I think that was appropriate. Alright, so that takes us to, now that we've made all this, we need a delegate to actually go forth and, and bring this forward. Mr. Fenley?
I'd like to nominate MJ Burns as our convention delegate, assuming though she's not here.
And Mr. Smaha?
I'm seconding.
Seconding that. I...
Procedural question, can we do that with her not here?
Uh, yes, I, I have, I have been reliably informed that Ms. Burns would accept this not, this, this appointment, if it were, if it were made, in absent, in absentia.
Okay.
So, all in favor of appointing MJ Burns as our delegate? And that is unanimous. All right, we're doing on time. And that brings us to the MCAS report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Let me see, it's popping it on first?
Uh, and actually, before, before you begin here, I want to just preface this by, given the, you know, the depth of the MCAS data and the, you know, the amount of it, we're going to spread this discussion over the next two meetings. So we'll receive the presentation tonight, ask any clarifying questions in particular to help us understand the data that we're looking at. But then to give us a little more time to digest that information and have a fuller discussion, we'll bring this back as old business at the next meeting for some additional questions and further discussion.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And I thank you in advance too, because I did reach out to ask for a specific, you know, what type of information did we really want to see in this presentation? So I appreciate that insight in advance. So the first piece that I want to talk about is the accountability ratings. And these are back online. It's been a slight change and a little hiatus over the last couple of years with the pandemic, but targets were set and, and districts received an accountability rating this year for last spring. So this slide here really has a lot of information on it, but I'll just capture a couple of the highlights. So if you see the yellow arrows, you can see that our overall classification for Wilmington as a whole is not requiring assistance or intervention. And the reason for that classification is because of our substantial progress towards targets. And you can see that our progress toward improvement targets was 51%, which is substantial progress. Down below on this chart, you can see each of the schools spelled out with what their status is, all not requiring assistance or intervention or insufficient data because of the grade span, and the accountability percentiles to the right. To give you a little more context, that substantial progress towards targets, I think if you look at it in this chart, you can get a sense from this past school year, all of the districts that they're including in this total, 390 districts, you can see where Wilmington fell in that category of substantial progress. So districts, 62 districts were either meeting or exceeding and the top 16%. Wilmington fell within the next group of substantial progress towards targets. And you can see how it continues down. This slide is very busy, just a couple of highlights that I wanted to point out. But this is the chart that really captures the points that are awarded as part of this accountability system. So points are awarded in achievement growth, high school completion, progress towards English language proficiency, additional indicators such as chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework. The chart is organized and I kind of highlighted the top in yellow for grades three to eight and then pink on the side or purple for high school, just so you can kind of track it a little bit easier. So it's considered non-high school and high school. And within each grade span, points can be earned by all students and also by lowest performing students. So within, under grades three for eight, three through eight, for example, you see the first three columns are for all students that are in non-high school, and then the next three are the lowest performing students. So this calculation allows us to determine the overall points that are earned by the district in each of those areas, such as, as I mentioned. But for example, under achievement in grades three through eight, you can see that there's a potential of four points that could be earned for each of the ELA, math and science. And you can see where we've earned two points, two points or zero points. If we earn zero points, it's because our scores declined from the year prior. I highlighted a few key things that we're focusing on. And again, we are still, well, I should mention, we'll be launching into this work in depth this, later this month, as the whole district K-12. So we'll do some digging into some of these scores and more of what this means. But highlighted a few things in green where we did really well, and a couple areas in red where we need to do some more digging and, and see why we did not earn points in those areas. So I'm going to jump into the next part of this presentation, which is the ELA part. We'll look at performance over time for all of our students who take the MCAS assessment, as well as different subgroup performance. So these slides that you'll see, I believe I shared some of these last spring potentially, maybe not as the whole committee, but we have access to a, a data dashboard that allows us to take this information from MCAS and really have it in a, use it in a way that's really helpful for us to be able to manipulate the data and sort and filter quickly. So this has been really a helpful tool. So this slide you'll see here is from that dashboard, and this is summarizing the overall English Language Arts district results for all of our students in grades three through 10 who take the assessment or all, all through high school, whenever they take it. And you can see here at the top, you'll see that it says percent of students proficient. So on the top left-hand side of the screen, so we have 49% of students in our district overall scored either meeting or exceeding. So they're categorizing those students as proficient. And you can see that that was no change from last year, and we are 4% higher than the state average. Though, if you look at the, the trajectory line below, the dotted line is the state average and the solid line is Wilmington. If you follow across the top again, you can see that the average scaled score is there and it shows the difference from last year, the prior year, as well as the variance from the state average. And then the same thing is the, the next box is the average student growth percentile. So you can see that we're four points above the state for the SGP, but it was a slight decline from last year. And then to the right, that chart shows you that where schools fell within the overall ranking. But there's, that's not very clear on these slides. You'll see on a future slide that it's more easier to read.
Can I, can I just ask one, one clarifying question here? And, and I understand what it means, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands. Could you talk just a little bit about what SGP means?
So student growth percentile is a calculation that really allows, a student will earn a growth, will earn a rating about, related to their growth based on the cohorts of students that they are most likely within the state. So they're comparing students to, I think it's two years prior, students who had the same scores with them two years prior in MCAS across the state. So that it's, in a, in a way, it's apples to apples, that they're looking at, making sure that the, they are taking all of those kids together, looking at their scores from this past year and seeing where they fell on that continuum based on students who have similar profile, I mean, not similar profile, who have the same score. So they performed in the same way. So that is how they determine the growth. And, you know, I think between 40 and 60 is the typical range of what we would see as a normal range. And of course, we're always trying to reach the highest growth possible for any of our students.
I can jump in here for a second.
Do.
The way to, one way to think about growth is that it goes kind of hand in hand with achievement. That achievement is sort of an absolute measure of like, you know, what, are you meeting standards? Are you at grade level? And then growth is really a question of improvement. It's like, how much have you improved relative to other people who were scoring similar to you? And the term that, the term that is used is academic peers. The idea is just like, well, how did you do this year compared to your academic peers? You know, last year, you scored 500. And this year, you scored 508. And so we look at everyone who scored 500 last year and say, well, how did they do this year, this year? So we take all those kids and then you just take their scores, put it right on a percentile chart and just look, where does 508 fall? And so, you know, if that's at the 62nd, you know, percentile, if you have an SGP of 62, that means that you scored higher this year than 62% of your academic peers, of the people who were like you last year in terms of their scores. And then, you know, 38% of those kids who are your academic peers scored higher than you did.
Thank you. The next slide is again, ELA results, but this is overall, again, by school. For all of our students, you can see the traject, the, the year over year, 2018 to 2023 listed by school. And you can see the percentage rates. And those percentage rates are that level of proficiency, which is students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. The center, you'll see the schools sorted by their overall percentage, so ranked. And the trajectory line, the dotted line is the state average. And then on the right side, proficient over time, you can just see that trend. For the sake of the screen being, the print being small, I did label the high school and middle school because they're sorted alphabetically, but you would only see Wilmington at the first part. So the light blue is, line is the high school and the darker greenish line is the middle school. And then down below, you can see the proficient by testing grade levels specifically. So again, these are all students in ELA overall, all included.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
And let me, let me know if, these could be a little challenging. With these numbers, like, is there any statistical significance between like, let's say a 50 and a 52? Are they really different? Or are they, can we assume that they're essentially the same? It's kind of capturing like a distribution?
Well, when we go down, they're nearly the same. When we go up, they're significant.
Understood.
No, I'm just kidding. No, but I mean, every, every inch, you know, every, every point matters. And I think, you know, so you might be able to answer the significance of the statistical piece of it more, better than I could, but we're constantly looking for improvement, so.
Okay. And then like a follow-on, when they give the, these numbers now out, is there like a variance guidance? So for example, like, it's 55 plus or minus five, or plus minus 10, or we can expect, you know, these could fluctuate a certain way? Is that given out at all, or no?
Well, I believe it's based on, you know, the students, the, how they score on the assessment, and then it is just a clear calculation.
Okay.
You know, it is one data point for every student individually that we're using in conjunction with much larger data to help us. But understanding that there's variations in the, that it's, you know, the calculation is science, but students taking a test is not. And there's different experiences each day when a student comes in to take that assessment.
That, that's not really captured in this type of data, but that, because you're basically talking about measurement error.
Yeah.
And that's, that's addressed in parent guardian reports, because in the parent guardian reports that all, that all families receive, there's essentially like a little kind of graph that's given, like a little bar that basically says, here's your, you know, here's your score and your child is probably between here and here. Like, to basically think of it in terms of a range, because no test can precisely measure whatever it's trying to measure with complete accuracy every single time. So there's, it's always just saying, eh, you're in, you're in this little bubble of range.
Yeah, that, that was kind of more my question. Thanks. You articulated it way better than I did, so.
Okay. This next slide, I have separated out and filtered, I should say, filtered, just to see the progress of our students with disabilities, who are, students who are on IEPs or 504s. So you can see here, the, I want to point out that this trajectory line is still the state average. It is not the state average of students on IEPs or 504s. So just keep that in mind, that that is showing where our students with disabilities and 504s are related to the state average overall, all students. But we had a decline of 1% in this subgroup, and we're below, 25% below the state average for all students. And you can see where the scaled score and the growth fell as well. Because this trajectory line is not apples to apples, I wanted to share with you, which you may not have in your, I realized at the 11th hour, that the attachment that you got may not be the one that has this additional slide. So this slide here does show you the students in grades three to eight with disabilities, the difference between the state Wilmington's students with disabilities on IEPs and the state of the same subgroups. So for example, it's a little unusual the way it's listed here, but WPS meeting and exceeding students were 10%, where the state had 15% meeting and exceeding. And the Wilmington's partially meeting students in gray was 46%, where the state was 47. And our not meeting percentage was 44, where the states was 39. So definitely an area that we'll need, we need to work on. But I wanted to give you that data to show you that that is, you know, a little bit different than that trajectory line, because that's not apples and apples. You can then see the same, I have it for grade 10 as well. So here you see Wilmington's meeting and exceeding at the high school level. When our students reach the high school, they close that gap, many of them. And we have our, this subgroup has 37% meeting and exceeding, where the state's average of this particular group is 22. Our partially meeting is 33%, where the states is 47. And then our not meeting is 29%, where the state is This next slide looks at all of our students across the district by race. You can get a sense here of the different categories and where, this is all ELA, all students regardless of disability status, just sorted by race. So you can see the number of students tested in the top left-hand corner, the proficiencies, proficiency percentage, the student growth percentile, and the average scaled score for each of these different subgroups. The next subgroup that we looked at was gender in ELA. So the chart on the left are females and the chart on the right are males. On the left are female students, 52% were scored in the proficient range, which is a decline of 2% from the prior year, but it's 7% above the state average. Their scaled score is 501 and the growth was, you know, minor change from last year. And then if you look at the males, they increased by 3% from the prior year, but their percent of, they're 45% as opposed to the female, 52%. But you can see slightly lower growth as well. And the scaled score is just slightly below that of females. The trajectory for males is very close in line with the state average. This next slide is low-income students. So looking at our low-income students, 31%, again, this is all grades, three through 10, 31% were meeting or exceeding. So that's a 2% increase from last year. It's below the state average overall. The average scaled score, 487, and the growth was up 6.2, which is, I think, a substantial jump, which is great. Still lower than, we need to close that gap if you look at the trajectory line.
Sorry.
I'm just like staring at this chart.
But I also don't want to like speak out of turn. Just to clarify, how, I don't know if it's the state MCAS, us defines low income.
So that is through the state that make, determines that. And I know that, you know, there's, that's been used for identifying free and reduced lunch. And so there are metrics to determine that. So it populates in that data.
Mr. Turner?
Do you have, similar to students with IEP and 504, is there a similar sort of?
I did not do, because of the number of slides, I picked the, the bigger subgroups that I knew we wanted that information. I didn't, but there are charts. I did give you a chart for the high school that does show all of that. And I can pull it up for the younger grades too. But just for the sake of time, I didn't redo that calculation with the trajectory for everybody, or for each group, I should say. And some of our subgroups are smaller in number and it's harder to really get that trend because the... This is one of those groups that is smaller in number and is hard to sometimes look at longitudinal data. This next slide is our English learners. And you can see that the level of proficiency was 10%, well below the state average. But the, the growth was 66 for the student growth percentile, which was up 17.6% from the previous, private, prior year, which is fabulous. This is a fluid group in the sense that a student might be identified as an English learner. And the goal is, is for them to no longer be identified as that. So they may not, they might move out of that category and be a former English learner and no longer be categorized as an EL for the next year for the test. So it's a little bit harder to track that subgroup of students over time. We can track that information, but the chart doesn't necessarily show you longitudinal data as a district in that way. So you just have to, there'll be another slide later on that shows a little bit more information about how many We can track that information, but the chart doesn't necessarily show you longitudinal data as a district in that way. So you just have to, there'll be another slide later on that shows a little bit more information about how many students that actually is. So it's a little bit more fluid. So then this next section moves on to math, and we'll follow suit in the same way with our overall performance and then subgroup performance. So the first score here, you'll see the math student proficient, proficiency level is fifty-five percent. You can see the, the trajectory line is very, definitely above the state, but it's following suit with performance overall. We have a one percent increase from last year, we're thirteen percent above the state overall in the number of students, a percentage of students proficient. You can see the average growth, fifty-one point four. It was a slight increase and scaled score at five oh two. The next slide is the overall results by school. So you can see how the schools ranked in how their performance overall across the district. And again, from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, you see the, the actual percentage of the students' scores by, by school and then by grade level. Again, the trajectory on the right will show you that timeline or the, the lines to show the path that they've taken over time. And down below at the bottom, that grid shows the, the dark line going across is the state average, and you can see where each of those grade levels fell in relation to the state average. This next slide, whoops. Did I go ahead? Yeah. So this next slide is the math scores of students with IEPs or 504s. And you can see the twenty-five percent of our students in this group have either met or exceeded. This is again, all grades, and it's one percent increase from last year. The growth was a slight decline from last year. So you can see our trajectory is, you know, below state average here for our students on IEPs or with 504s. And then this next slide is the same example that I gave for ELA, but really showing the same subgroups so that we can do a better comparison. So we had fifteen percent of our great, this, I'm sorry, let me clarify. This is grade three to, three through eight, the high school's on a separate slide. So fifteen percent were meeting or exceeding in Wilmington, where twelve percent of the state of our students with disabilities were meeting or exceeding. Forty-nine percent partially meeting in Wilmington, where the forty-one percent for the state, thirty-six partially meeting, not meeting, excuse me, for Wilmington, where it was forty-six for the state not meeting. And then for the high school, you'll see that this is where it has leveled out at the meeting and exceeding, grade ten students with disabilities, sixteen percent were meeting and exceeding, which is the same as the state average. Fifty-six percent of Wilmington students were partially meeting, and where the states were fifty-nine. And then twenty-eight for not meeting and twenty-five for the state. So Wilmington was twenty-eight and the state was twenty-five. This next slide talks about all students, and it's filtered by race, but these are math scores now. So you can see how our students overall did. On the top left, you can see the total number of students tested, it was fourteen forty-nine. The number of students that fell within each of those different categories, their level of proficiency, their, their SGP and their scaled score. You know, we have Asian students, eighty-three percent were proficient in math, with multiracial students, sixty-four percent, white, fifty-three percent, Hispanic, et cetera, forty-four, forty-two. And that goes across, you can see it for both proficiency growth and math as well. This next slide is math scores by gender. We had here fifty-two percent of our females scored proficient, and that was a slight increase, one percent from last year, and that's above the state average. The growth was a slight decline at forty-nine point six SGP. Math scores for males were as, six points higher than the females. It was fifty-eight percent were proficient, or meeting or exceeding. And the growth was one point eight increase from last year, and the scaled score was slightly higher. So males are doing slightly higher district-wide by gender in math. And then looking at all grade levels, low-income subgroup. So here we had a slight decline of one percent, thirty percent of our students are proficient, meeting or exceeding. And you can see the trajectory line is below that of the state. We are, average SGP was forty-eight point eight, slight increase, but not significant. And the next is our English learner population. This is in math. So this was a three percent increase from the prior year, twenty-five percent of our students were meeting or exceeding. Again, this growth here is eighty point five, which is quite impressive. So twenty-four point seven points higher than the prior year. So, but yet, our students, you can see that's quite a fluctuation in that trajectory line. So it really depends on where the students are, you know, how long they've been here in acquiring the language and, and their, their proficiency levels with the language as well. The next section of this will look at our science scores overall and in subgroups. So great, this is grades five and eight. I've split this up into different categories. You know, our students are assessed in science in grades five and eight, and then at the high school level. So first we'll look at grades five and eight. So there was forty-eight percent of our students were meeting or exceeding, so that's seven percent decline from last year, still above state average by five percent. We don't have a, a student growth percentile here, because you need students to take the test annually in order to earn that, and because the assessment isn't given annually, it's grades five and eight. And high school, they don't have multiple years of data in a row to make, make that determination of student growth. This next, oops, sorry, I was ahead on my own slides. This next slide here is the North Intermediate, West Intermediate, and Wilmington Middle School. Their scores in how they performed, and you can see the, there's only one grade, you know, it's, there's no, it's only grade five at North and West, and then grade eight at the middle school. So it's not broken down by grade. These, this next slide talks about the students' science scores for students on IEPs and 504s and grades five through eight. You can see that there was a decline for this group of students, nine percent from the year prior. Twenty percent of our students were meeting or exceeding, with an average scaled score of four hundred and eighty-four. And again, no growth because it is not given annually. And you can see that trajectory line here for this particular subgroup heading not in the positive direction. Again, this is the comparison of students with disabilities, so that we're looking, you know, a better comparison. So Wilmington students who were meeting or exceeding was fourteen percent, where the state was fifteen percent. Wilmington's students with disabilities that were partially meeting was fifty-two percent, where the state was forty. And our students that were not meeting in Wilmington were thirty-four percent, and forty-five percent for the state. So stronger than the state's subgroup. This next slide shows science, all students by race for grades five and eight. So you can see it's how it splits here with proficiency in science and the scaled score in science as well. And you can see the number of students tested. So as students move through different grade levels for, for particular groups that are smaller in number, that you can see that fluctuation change over time. These are science scores by gender for grades five and eight. So our females dropped nine percent last year in these grades to forty-five percent proficient. The males dropped four percent last year, down to fifty-two percent. So we saw some decline in science in these grade levels overall, but there is still a discrepancy between females and males in science. At one point, I would say in twenty twenty-two, they were, the trajectory was pretty close. They were closer, but, but we are still seeing some variation here. And looking at low-income for science for grades five and eight, you can see twenty-one percent of our students identified as low-income were proficient, which is a decline of four percent from the prior year, and you can see that trajectory line as well. This next slide, it looks a little bit different, because I wanted to make sure that I had the most accurate information for this presentation this evening. So we eliminated, as you recall, back maybe two years ago, year and a half ago, we had the high school program review, and we made, the science department made a proposal to eliminate the two distinct pathways for science as part of our review. So last year was the first year that all freshmen took the biology MCAS. So prior to that, and also in twenty twenty-two, students in CP level courses were taking an intro to physics, while those in the honors level course were taking the biology MCAS. So we made that switch, and there were a few other kids in transition who were taking other assessments as well. We didn't have, I wanted to ensure we had all the full data in our dashboard, and I didn't want to exclude any, so I pulled this report just to be sure as we were making this transition, so that you can see how our students did overall in biology. So we, again, this was used, in twenty twenty-two, you can see the test here for biology. That was just our honors students taking that test, the students that were on that track for the honors course as a freshman. And you can see now all of our freshmen took that course. So we saw, you know, some slight decline in a couple areas, but overall, I think they did really well. And I think it was a good, good transition. So it'd be interesting to see as we continue where we end up with, how, how they do over time. And the high school students with disabilities, again, this is the science for, in comparison to the state. So WPS was ten percent meeting and exceeding, where the state was sixteen. But we were sixty percent partially meeting, the state was fifty-three. And then thirty percent not meeting for us and thirty-one for the state. And as you mentioned before, you had asked about the other subgroups. I have it for the high school in this presentation, would be helpful if I clicked it. The, it's a lot of information to look at the slide here. So I didn't go through and do all the trajectories for each. But the, you can see some overall data that we, that I highlighted, things in red, with a outline in red. Those are some areas in need of improvement, so are obviously the students, high school students with disabilities, students with low income, and students that fall in the high needs category. But what I do want to point out, which I thought was interesting, I, as we were speaking about science, you heard me talk a lot about how the discrepancy with male and female, with the gender. And when we get to the high school, you see that discrepancy close at the high school, which is good news. So they, it really seems to balance out a little bit more when you look across how they're performing at the high school level. So we have begun, there's a lot of work under.
Christine, before you jump into this, I just was going and seeing especially a lot of the, in the, in the science results. And you mentioned that growth is not calculated for science, because it's only given in grades five, eight, and once in high school usually. For the same, essentially for the same reason, I think we also need to be a little bit careful about interpreting the subgroup breakdowns. Because unlike ELA in math, which covers all tested grades, with so few grades tested, you just, the, the, the number of actual students that you're dealing with is far, far lower. And so you have to be a little bit, you know, it's like, in some of these categories, it's gonna be like a handful of students. And so it does make it a little bit hard to draw certain inferences in those cases. You know, the smaller, the smaller the cohort of students that you're dealing with, then, you know, the harder it is to, you know, to know, to know what you're, how to respond, or necessarily what you're actually even seeing by some of the disparities that, that we look at, so.
Absolutely, and that is why, even though this has a lot of information, I wanted to put this chart on here, because you can see the students included. So, you know, for example, EL and former EL was, two students were included in that, in that rating. So that's hard to draw major conclusions. Thank you for bringing that up. The next piece here, I wanted to just highlight some of the things that we've already started working on related to this and, and action steps that are already underway. But we're still in the very preliminary stages of, of working through all of this with all of our staff. So the first, we actually, last Friday, we had our district leadership team meeting. We went through, in this room, we went through a process of root cause analysis protocol to begin to really look at what are the areas that we need to do the most work, what are some of the causes of some of those inequities that we're seeing. And it was a great, thirty people all brainstorming some of the causes and potential solutions. We'll be working towards developing an action plan out of that work that we created. The October CIT Day that is coming up on the twenty-fifth, I believe, is, will be having a strong focus on MCAS analysis. Most, in the past, or since I've been here, and what I've been told prior, there was, the emphasis on MCAS analysis was really school-based, and it was done at each school. I really want to have that emphasis be a K-12 focus, and so we'll be dedicating time. There'll be a presentation like this for every school, specific to their grade levels only, not district whole, their district data as a whole. But they'll have their own slide deck that looks very much like this, but with their specific information, as well as the ability to really look at the release questions and how students performed overall, looking at curricular, any impact that, you know, changes that they might need to make to instruction or pacing based on what they're seeing in overall performance by our students in that way. The other piece that will be really important is to mention is that we have finished all of our data meetings at the middle school. They are complete, the first round, with ten different teams. And the elementary grades are underway, we are about halfway through the elementary grade data meetings. At each of these meetings, we're talking about, at the middle school, we shared grade-specific data on the MCAS with all of those teams prior to the meetings, as well as very specific information about how our students are doing on our universal screening assessments in addition. And we're working through that with the elementary grades as well. So those plans at those meetings that are established for students are very specific about student intervention, whereas the MCAS analysis will really be more about our process and our procedures as looking at it from the curricular lens, and what can we do differently as far as our instructional approach and our materials. The literacy pilot, you'll be having a presentation from myself and our elementary literacy coordinator, Melissa Betancourt, in an upcoming future meeting, hopefully. But we want to give you an update around that, but that pilot is well underway, and we have a significant number of teachers piloting our new reading programs. And that will be a full, the intention is for a full implementation next fall. We'll be making, hopefully, a recommendation to this committee in January about adopting a program that will, is really evidence-based and that will helpful, hopefully, really help address some of the literacy issues that we're seeing in our data. There's been significant amount of professional development done on the science of reading. Melissa Betancourt, as I mentioned, the literacy coordinator, has done quite a bit of PD with our elementary teachers, and also on the summer, did offer some PD to our middle school reading teachers, which was very well received. We have been really making a concerted effort to increase the number of teachers who are getting trained in Orton Gillingham or Willing, Wilson training. So many of our special ed teachers and reading teachers are going through the formal program with the practicum to earn that licensure. We added a new literacy universal screener, DIBELS, this year, so that data's really been helpful in the data meetings. That's K-5, that's been helpful, and of us teasing out very specific nuanced areas of strength and weakness that will really help us with reading intervention. We added a new math universal screener at the middle school, so this was our first go-around looking at math. We use iXL as the screener there this year, and it breaks it down by domain. It's been really helpful for us determining wing groups for student intervention. And we have been running math workshop on professional, math workshop professional development. Michelle Levek, the K-5 STEM coordinator, has been running that with all of our teachers, really providing the structure with our existing math program to be able to create opportunities for teachers to better differentiate with their students in the class setting, so that it's less teacher delivery and more. in the class setting, so that it's less teacher delivery and more, you know, small group instruction and differentiated. And we did make an increase to our EL staffing due to the rising enrollment and increase of newcomers to our district, so the needs have been growing immensely. And we have worked all last, well, the last two years, but we've pushed out the revised version of our SST process, formerly called IST, our Student Success Team process, which included training video for staff, a new flow chart, and focus on implementing the de-cap as part of that pre-urcal process. So we are in the early stages, but we have a lot of things underway that are helping us to address some of the things that we're seeing here. And we intend to more, formalize more of the action plan as we go and do this work as a hands-join effort across the entire district. And that's it.
Thank you. I appreciate the depth and thoroughness of the information. Mr. Smaha?
I have one comment and two clarification questions. First, thank you so much for this report. Like, this is really in-depth information. You know, and like I've said about MCAS before, you know, it's not the end-all, the be-all. But when I see that last slide of all of the different things that we're doing, you're looking at the iXL, the DIBELS, the screeners, the data meetings, getting teachers trained in, you know, Orton Gillingham, Wilson, rules-based reading things, PD on differentiation, talking about the de-caps, increasing, you know, YLS, like, all of that stuff, even if it doesn't translate into growth in MCAS, are all really important things. I just want to preface all of that, saying that, and thank you for, for presenting all that information. One point of clarification on our, on the numbers, on the data referring to our students with disabilities, does that include students who are placed out of district? Like, like, to seem collaborative, for example?
So I have-
Does that come back to-
In our, in our dashboard, we have the option of including those students in the data, and, or excluding them, just to look at what, you know, so we can select. So whenever I had that option, I selected just our, our schools-
Just, just us, okay.
-students that are in C. That's, it's helpful information to see that as well, but for this purpose, I did not include them in that.
Yeah, because that's, we don't have control.
Right, right, of the instruction necessarily.
Over that. And my, my other question, I make this kind of a comment too, but it's, it's about the, you know, you've got male and female, and, you know, with sort of the way the times are going, students who are either non-binary, non-conforming, are they just not, they're not counted in either category?
They weren't, there wasn't enough of a subgroup for that to, to be listed.
Okay.
There, there, that is an option in some of the data, definitely. Just wasn't enough-
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
-I was looking at.
Any other questions or comments?
Yep. So first, the comment, I sort of kind of want to echo what Jay said, really nice, comprehensive overview, like the way he laid it out and everything. I, I think just a clarifying question or request for the next meeting. For the last slide with the action steps, they, they, they sound good to me. Unfortunately, I, I don't know what a lot of it means, and I was just thinking, like, for the community's benefit too, if that can be explained, a little bit like a table or something, hopefully something that's not too much extra work on your end. Like, the Orton Gillingham stuff sounds great, I just have no idea what that is.
Can certainly do that. And I would encourage you to come to our literacy parent event coming up next. I'm happy to add that. But we will be talking a lot, all of that literacy stuff that's in here, so a little plug for that on November sixteenth. We'll be having that parent, it's for K-5, is the, or pre-K-5, but it is all about the elementary literacy initiatives that are happening. So for people that do want a more in-depth discussion and want to join us for that, we would encourage them to sign up. So the flyer went home, or was, was sent out Friday, I believe, but we'll continue to send it out and send it out through the schools as well with the registration link. But I would be happy to try and spell that out a little bit more, less acronyms and-
Sure. Thank you.
Oh, Tuesday, okay.
It's Monday, it's Halloween.
Oh, right, sorry.
Oh, so on the district calendar.
It's, yes. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
One, one quick request. Thirty-three slides is lovely, but I would also like the other ones that you do, do have, the additional comparison slides. Could you add those to the-
The, the charts, the-
The statewide ones, or the state-selected charts for, for IEP and-
For all the different subgroups, yeah.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
This presentation that she shared today will be swapped out on your Google Drive tomorrow.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Bryce?
I have nothing that I need at this moment, but I'm just curious for next time, if we could have a definition of how we're defining science of reading. I think that would be helpful for the committee and for the public. And then the scores, obviously, for our students with disabilities, I'm just wondering how, I'd love to know more about how Alice and her office are participating in this data, and then the PD. So what's, I'm trying to envision that, so that would be sort of a helpful, I'll definitely be, I'll want to know more about that next time. So just sort of, I'm just curious to know what that looks like, who's overseeing that, I guess, because those scores are very concerning. And finally, that's all for now. Thank you.
What was the first thing, the definition?
Science of reading. It's all a buzz, but, so I always ask wherever I'm doing PD, wherever I'm working with any di, I'm just like, can you define for me how you're defining science of reading? And you'd be surprised, actually, that every, many districts, many schools, and states, working with a place in Illinois, and their definition's different than the one in Indiana there. So it's really-
Right.
-interesting, but also quite similar, just sort of different-
Nuances.
Yeah. They're like, wait, no, I think it means this. And I'm like, well, if you look at it, actually, it's still including all the domains of literacy. It's not just one domain. And so I just think it's important for everybody to understand that although there's this huge focus on phonics and fluency, we're still incorporating all those other domains of literacy. So to not lose sight-
Absolutely.
-of all of that, I think is really important.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have the first read of Dr. Brand's superintendent goals. We are in year two of the two-year evaluation cycle that we decided on at the beginning of the 2223 school year. And so, Dr. Brand?
Thank you very much. In the packet accompanying this item are two, excuse me, two documents, one, a general cover memo, and then the goals overall. Just to start, as I tried to outline in the memo, and for the community that may be watching, over the last, well, all of my, my time here, there's always been intentionality around trying to provide a framework, if you will, around my evaluation for you as a committee, certainly tying it very closely to the Massachusetts Model System for Education Evaluation of School Superintendent's. As, as you recall, part of that model system includes the identification of goals to help in terms of guiding your overall evaluation of, of my performance. Goals are obviously just one measure, but certainly they're an important one to that end. You'll note the reminder language in there, the recommendations, and it's just that, it's recommendations from the Department of Education around the total number of goals, the total focus indicators, and so on. So in the interest of time, I'll try and just brush over that. But that just, I think, is an important context. And then the second page, relative to the public meetings that should be dedicated for you as a school committee, to the overall evaluation of these goals. And I've put in the memo, some suggested timeframes that obviously start with this evening, followed by additional dates in October, March, and May. Obviously, we can adjust those if and as necessary. I think it's just important to point out that, you know, the, these goals are, they're meant to be, of course, an important, very important component of my work, not called out here specifically as anything that I'm attached to directly as part of the strategic plan. And certainly, of the increasing demands of the MSBA project, some of that is, of course, of course included as part of the strategic plan, but there's many other elements that are not. So as I made mention in the memo, though, that there's intention not to certainly call that as a separate goal, per se. It's just, it comes with my work and the responsibilities that I have as your superintendent. What is not on these, I'll just point it out, what is not currently on these proposed goals, and I would want to underscore that, they are proposed, they're ultimately for you to approve, is a goal around student transportation, something that you, you know, we have to decide how we're going to, how we're going to proceed and move forward with that. But I just want to acknowledge that, that it's not here. But we're here tonight, really, to get your feedback. These are proposals. Ultimately, ultimately, what I want is a set of goals that you're comfortable with, that you can stand behind, and that you can ultimately approve at a subsequent meeting. The goals, I'll go through those briefly here in the second document that you have, starting with goal number one. I tried to follow the same layout that I've used previously. It seemed to have been well-received, but always happy to have any feedback that you have in terms of something that would make it easier for you to follow. As you can see, the goal is on the left-hand side, the respective standards that come from the Department of Education are identified in the second column from the left. The third column are the indicators, also directly from the Department of Education's model system. And then the fourth column, farthest to the right, are the action steps and timelines. Goal number one centers around instructional leadership. It's something that has been sitting there largely for myself and our team around how we continue to seek assurances that we have in place the best overarching level of instructional leadership throughout all of our schools. It's something that also is going to be front and center as we think about transitioning into a new school eventually, and how that, how that model, or sorry, how that new school intersects with our other existing operational schools. I put a, a note there in terms of what I'm thinking about in terms of instructional leadership, that's down sort of the bottom of that first row. It's far more than just school principals or assistant principals, but instructional leadership. And my framework for that is inclusive of coaches, instructional coaches, and our instructional leaders, those that we enlist to and charge with responsibility of overseeing and leading to departments. You can see the standards that I've, I've identified and felt appropriately would be tied to that goal, as well as the indicators, and then the overall action steps and timeline. So I can go through all of them if you'd like, and then pause for questions, or if you want to stop for each one, whatever, whatever you would prefer.
I mean, I think I would just take them one at a time.
Sure, okay. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, comments, or feedback on goal number one.
Well, that's Dr. McCarty? Yep. So thanks. Goal number one, I, I like goal number one a lot. And I was just wondering if you foresee any envision, or envision any overlap with the strategic plan. I kind of saw some of that when I was reading that. And then to follow on from that, do you think maybe through goal number one, you may want to revisit parts of the strategic plan?
Yeah, great question, and, and thank you for that. So certainly, it's possible. You know, I, I think that we have, it's possible that there's a, there's an eventual necessary intersection with the strategic plan. You know, there, there is no, I would certainly want to be very, very clear with this, there's no preconceived notion or expectations that I'm looking to fit into this goal specifically. I think over time and over the years of, of working in this role, one of the realities, like many others, are there's immense challenges with trying to ensure instructional leadership that's appropriate to support and lead eight schools, and all of the multiple, the multiple departments and such across them. In addition, there is certainly the aspect of coaching, instructional coaching, that, you know, is, I think, pretty important, but we, we, we don't have those, such positions in place. So I just think it's an important opportunity, again, on, it's not on the eve of opening a new school, but, you know, certainly not too far in the distant future, where it would be good to conduct an overall assessment of where we want to go and what we think is most important as a district. If, after all of these, there's recommendations that are forthcoming that include financial resources, budgetary resources, of course, those, I would strongly encourage us to consider incorporating that perhaps into a strategic plan, but ultimately, budgetary resources, of course, fall to your purview. So I think it, it, it will depend on sort of the outcomes here. But as I've tried to highlight, I think that research can play a really important role here in terms of what's considered to be effective, and also taking a view of some of our other districts around, to gather a sense of how they're approaching this work.
Other comments or questions?
I'm try, oh, sorry. I'm try, so, I guess for the, I'm trying to understand, so when I look at these goals, I think of urgency. And so I'm trying to see, like, I'm trying to read between the line. I'm like, what are we trying to get at here? I guess, can you just help me? So I think, obviously, I think doing this is very important. But why is this goal one? And can you just walk me through, why this one? Why now? Is it the, the building that's coming? Or are you, is there a perceived major flaw in sort of how this is happening currently, that we're trying to, we're trying to dig into that? Or is it just that there's not enough? So I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, what-
Yep.
-what brought this up right now? Is it the building coming, or is it something else?
Thank you for the question. And I should have prefaced this by saying, these are in no particular order. So, and I should have made note of that, clearly. But that said, no, I think it's very, very fair to say that this is sat there for me and for us, specifically, I'll, I'll talk to my colleague, Ms. Elliott, around, there, there are some imperfections in our current structure. There are some challenges in our current structure that we, structure, sorry, that we feel in different ways from time to time. Again, I think it goes to the number of schools that we have. And, and so I also recognize with this that, at the end of this, this is a long-term goal. So depending on what comes from such a review, this is certainly something that's going to have to be, if we're, if we're, if there's a recommendation that comes to perhaps add a particular structure, or, or repurpose existing resources, anything that's going to come from this, I will recognize, this is a multi-year, you know, plan. It's not just going to be something that's going to be able to be put front and center and then enacted upon for next year. So I think it's, I, I think it's time, I think it's just been something that's been building and sitting there. And again, looking ahead, there'll be a new school, it's still a number of years away, but I certainly recognize that anything that, if, if there are additional resources, we're going to have to figure out how to do that and when.
Can I just follow, just before I forget?
Yeah, for sure.
But I guess I'm just wondering if we, so I'm looking at your timeline, conduct a review of the research, gather information, what other districts are doing, February, March, strengths, weaknesses, and challenges of our current model. I guess I'm just wondering if, I don't want to know about our current model sooner, so that I can, I understand the idea of, but I'm also trying to, like, for me, it's like a foundation, like, I'm trying to frame this. And so I'm just wondering if there's a reason not to provide in the action step, this. Here's what's hap, for me, I'm trying to like, well, what's happening right now? Like, that's where I go. I'm like, well, what are we doing right now? So, so it's years off, but clearly, there's a structure in place. So I'm just trying to, like, envision what that looks like. Then I'm like, okay, then we do the research, then we look at other districts, then we come back to our own. I guess, do we have a strong enough sense of what we're currently doing, is, I guess what I'm getting at? Does that make sense?
Like a baseline.
Like a ba, like, I, in my own head, I need, like, and I, as I was reading this, this week, I'm like, I don't know if I know this well enough. And I was a little, like, not, I was upset with myself, because I'm like, huh, I don't know well enough how to describe this to others. I know it in many places, but I don't know if I know the model really securely here. And so I guess for me to sort of oversee, watch this happen, I kind of need to know, what does it currently look like? So I don't know if that means just, I would recommend maybe a shift in those steps. I'm not sure what I'm getting at, but something along those lines, I'm feeling, like, otherwise, it just winds up feeling, we're just collecting research and looking at another district. And I'm like, okay, great. But like, how is this tying back to what we're doing here? It's, it's going to be helpful for me. So just a, just a thought.
Mr. Turner?
So part of where I went when I read this goal, and, and let me know if this is part of your thinking, is our current structure is born of many years of, we, we got here through changes that were made over time, reflecting the district where it was at different times. We've heard here, especially in this last year, about a really changing dynamic in our student body. A lot more kids on IEPs, a lot more kids on 504s, a lot more kids with social, emotional concerns and challenges. Is part of this goal, looking at just even a population level, and more English language learners, looking at a population level of our students, and does our current structure match the student population? Is that part of what this goal is?
Certainly, that's an important component of this, absolutely. Right? So we have that changing dynamic, as you said, of our students. And, and that, in and of itself, certainly is a starting point, I think, is- and of itself, certainly is a starting point, I think, is a, is a foundation, to me, of this work and this direction of what we're talking about. It is more than just who's overseeing or supporting, I'm just picking a department, the math department. I mean, there's so many different levels and so many different programs that we obviously have to ensure are being appropriately led by strong and effective leadership, but that's certainly a foundational piece, so.
Any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, can we move to goal two?
Sure. Goal two is really, for me, situated as, as an effort to put some, you know, some stakes in the ground, I guess, if you will, in terms of trying to establish structure, more consistent structures in terms of bringing together members of our community. And, you know, the title's not so much important here, but just as the opportunity to create, create those chances, create those opportunities, and as you can see here, my suggestion is first, first, starting with our staff and our students, and then the second sort of phase is figuring out a way to integrate our families into this, our wider community, of what I've suggested is a superintendent's advisory council. You know, there's, there are, I think, rich opportunities that can be had from planned and regular face-to-face, you know, meetings that can provide me with direct feedback, unfiltered feedback from, in this case, the suggested staff and students around what's working very well in our district, and where are there opportunities for growth. So not necessarily at all a heavy lift, nothing even close to or resembling goal one. I can respect the fact that you, one may argue, well, is it really a goal? But to me, it's something that, you know, having, having, having parameters around it or a framework around it ensures for me that it's going to happen, and I, I also think about this as a window in terms of what my priority is for members of the community or staff to look at, so that's why I opted to include it here. I'll pause with that, I think the rest is self-explanatory, but certainly happy to take any comments or questions.
Mr. Turner?
So, I'm going to disagree with you. I think this one is more important. Not more important necessarily than number one, but more important than you stated, because when I think back to-
I stand corrected, sorry. You're right, no, you're right.
Because when I think back to the strategic plan and some of the topics we were discussing about, you know, staff belonging, and sense of belonging and safety, emotional topics, this ties into it as well. And part of making sure the staff feels safe and secure and welcome and empowered is listening to them, and I think this lines up with that very, very well. And I, regardless, whether or not you would do it as a staff and a student and a family, as three separate things, or one with all, I think is an important decision to make early on, because you would learn different things depending on how you organize it.
Sure, right.
But I think having an advisory group with staff particularly, I'm going to focus on that one, where people know who the people are, and so, you know, if they want to provide feedback through, you know, there, I would assume there are good models in other districts across the country of how to set that up. I think there's a tremendous amount of value to that, and it should help the staff feel more connected and feel more heard. I'm sorry, I'm very strongly in favor of this goal.
Thank you for your feedback.
Mr. Smaha?
I'm curious, I agree with everything Mr. Turner said. I also, I'm curious, how large of a group do you envision, like, what the makeup would be? Like, is this a small group, big group? Like, what are you thinking?
Well, great question, and thank you. So, you know, certainly as a, as a baseline, I'm thinking about the fact that we need to have all schools represented, but to me, I go deeper than that in terms of all departments too, because some departments don't necessarily naturally feel a part of or inclusive of a school, so, so I don't have a great answer for you yet at this point in time, but I think, you know, to me, I also look at this as necessarily, if larger means representation across the board, and at the end of that, everyone, wherever they are connected to, could say, okay, I have a seat at that table, whether that's 15 or 25, I have to sort that out, I would have to sort that out.
Mr. Fennel?
I'll agree, I like this one a lot. I think anytime we can, you know, increase or improve our engagement, that's certainly an admirable goal to have. What I don't see, and perhaps this is, you know, the second phase of this, or something, is sort of, we're going to gather these groups together, we're going to get some feedback, and then what are we going to do from there? Right? How are we going to, I think we've talked about this in a couple of other things, take that feedback and then implement it somehow? So I don't know if that comes as, you know, part B of the goal or something, but if you could, maybe for the next time, just include a little of that thought, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, I think this goal, I love it, it's great. Standard three, family and community engagement, I'm just, there's actually no family or community engagement in this goal, right? But I mean, I get it, but there's not, so, which I think is okay, because I think staff and students makes total sense, but I'm just wondering how we're saying that that's connecting to community outreach. That's my only hesitation there, it almost feels like it might be, I don't know, professional culture, I don't know, something else. So I don't know, I would just take a look at that, because I think then families are going to wonder why they're not invited.
It's a great point, so I'm, of course, embracing the community aspect and-
Sure.
-thinking about community and have certainly come to adapt that position, that community is our staff, right? It's our students, but I hear you, it's not, it's just, it's the standard that's there, but, yeah.
And I, can I just follow up, David?
Yes.
And I have, it's funny, because Jay and I, in our Family Community Outreach Subcommittee, were talking about a similar goal for families, and so as I'm listening to this, I'm like, ooh, wouldn't it be great if we set a goal, and so we sort of did something like this with community and families, and you did this, and then we sort of came together to share? I don't know, I feel like it'd be a way to sort of lighten all that, and also to empower that group a little bit, you know, our subcommittee?
Yep.
And then listening to the public comment tonight, but when can we talk to you? When can we talk, like, I think that providing a space for that, so it might be fun, fun, interesting. Sure, it'd be fun, interesting, for us to sort of, like, latch on to that a little bit in that subcommittee?
Yep.
And try and organize three or four, some virtual, some in person, to sort of, and utilize some of what you're doing, I think, to help us do that work, I think could provide a really neat picture for all of us around this table. I don't know.
Yeah, we certainly, obviously, I'm a part of that, I would certainly love to talk about that, and some of those ideas.
Sure.
It might get us to do it. I don't know, it's been on my agenda for a long time.
We'll get there. I think that in, in goal two, I would, I would like to see maybe a little bit more of the why included, rather than just kind of like the thing itself. It's like, all right, we're going to launch a superintendent's advisory council, we're hoping to have these people and these people on it, and then at the end of the year, when we're evaluating this goal, just like, yep, we made a council, and look, it had these people and these people on it, just like we said, and we provided, they provided direct input while I was in the meetings, like, you know, they could, people could talk right to me, and I kind of have just a sense of, okay, but what in the end was the purpose of all that, and what were the benefits of it? I think I would just like to have a little bit more of a sense of, of what exactly are we hoping to receive from that? Like, what are we going to, you know, what kind of, I mean, is it staff belonging, or that people have, that they feel they have a little bit of a more direct line to the district leadership? Is it because we're going to hear things that we wouldn't have otherwise heard, that this will elicit information and feedback that we didn't think we were going to get in any other way? I would like to see just like a little bit more, kind of taking that back, kind of like one more step of just like, and this is why it was a good idea for us to do this, and we got benefits from it. Dr. Bryson?
That's a really interesting point, and that may bring me back to my hesitation with goal one, is the why. So I'm actually looking at, and I'm like, well, I'm not sure that, I mean, we do it a little bit, and we, you do it a little bit in one, because we're preparing a report, like, I'm looking at those action steps, David, so I feel like in goal two, I'm like, well, here it says district-wide communication, so I can label that as a why. Meaningful ways to expand and improve the operation of the council, so I label that as a why. So I'm like, I feel like the whys are here in the action steps, but I, but I agree that that may be a piece that might be missing from, from some of the goals, and that's that foundation piece, again, like, wait, why are we doing this? What are we looking to do here?
So it's, it's great feedback, and I should have a fifth column, and seriously, I mean, there's the recognizing, I don't really think that this has come up so much, but it's, it's good that it has, I mean, in the past, I don't recall it, but the rationale for, you know, I recognize I'm here before the, for you, with sort of, these ideas are mine, but why? Where is the underlying, so, and I firmly believe I can add something to, Mr. Agstel, to your, not now, because I know it's getting late, but before the next time, so, I will do that.
That's why we have a second read coming up in the next meeting.
Unless there's anything else. School three, you know, this is definitely one I can appreciate from some of the comments and feedback from committee members around the rationale for this, and, you know, the district leadership team is, as Ms. Elliott was mentioning earlier, about 25 or so people, right? We're a pretty large group. And while some of us have, as part of the, certainly the senior leadership team have the regular opportunity to be a presence in schools, the wider team as at large does not, of course. And so this, to me, is, you know, there's so many ins to this, I think, from whether it be, we are one community, we are, you know, but it's richer than that, it's more than that, to me. It's about instructional walkthroughs and cultivating not only a sense of our staff, of sort of all leaders on board, and elevating their own knowledge, if I'm an elementary principal, of saying what's going on at the high school, or Mr. Gendron here, what's going on at the middle school. There's so many layers of richness, I think, to this that can provide not only something of benefit to staff, but also a benefit if I'm a school principal. And I have guests who are instructional leaders in, and we're all, we're all trying to, through a certain lens, take a particular look at something. I've been a part of these kind of walkthroughs before in some previous districts, and it's really, I think, an amazing professional experience, not only for those doing the walks or completing the walks, but also for staff, if there's some sort of feedback loop there for, we were looking for this, and here's what we saw, and this was awesome to see, and here's what you might want to think about. So that's the essence of goal three, and really just to be more than just trying to schedule these, but take that to the next level of how can we, as a team, elevate our own instructional leadership truly, in a sense, throughout the district. So that's goal three, and I'll happy to take any questions, comments, or feedback.
I'm going to jump in first here and just reiterate my same comment from the previous goal, that I think having that, a little bit more of that rationale, kind of as you were just expanding on here, but maybe to formalize that a little bit, so that when we come to evaluate this goal, that it's not just like, well, yep, we did the meetings, everyone got to every school, and so check that off, you know, off the box, goal accomplished. So I think that a little bit, as you were just expanding now, a little bit more in the goal about-
Sure.
-what we think that, because I, and I can picture a lot of stuff in my head, where it's just like, wow, it'd be great as a principal to go and be able to walk through and see what's happening in, you know, the next school above, the next school below, the sister school across, you know, not just to, you know, to collaborate with colleagues, but to actually, you know, be in the buildings and kind of see what's, you know, here, here's what the students are learning who are coming up to my school, and here's what they're learning after they leave my school, and so forth. I can, I can imagine a lot of benefit from that, and I think adding, adding some of those into the goal, I think, would, would benefit it. Other comments, questions?
You want to go first?
Please.
Um, please, you want to go first, or please, you want me to go? I'm seeing goal three so closely connected to also goal one, that I'm just, and then I look down at goal four, and I'm like, oh, so there seems to be this theme of instructional leadership, right? Like this bucket, and then these are these three pieces underneath it, where we're really trying to strengthen this piece to get our district to where we need to go net, like, so I don't know if it means reframing it, but I almost see it as like instructional leadership, A, B, C, or anyone, I don't know, just not, it doesn't matter, but I think they're actually, you can't do one without the other in a lot of ways. Like, I think it, the walkthroughs make so much sense with goal one, right? And any, when it was been in districts where they do walkthroughs, that's a huge piece of identifying the leadership within your building. So it's, it seems so, to me, like, I could see you all sitting in the room and develop, and makes total sense, I think, to try and make it a little bit more clear to the outside people who may not know the terms and the words-
Sure, sure.
...and how we talk about these things.
Thank you.
Please, no, I'm kidding.
Thank you. I, I like this goal a lot, I would, I don't know, I, my first read through it, I almost saw it as like three A and three B, in that I would love to see a component of this be around, like, school building safety, right? We've had a lot of conversations in this room about doors that need new locks or don't lock from the, whatever it is, right? And so, you know, maybe it's not on the same day, but I would love to see something around the district leadership team visiting these buildings focused solely on safety.
We do have actually, I can't remember the, there is a specific item on a safety audit that is a part of this, or is included in the strategic plans, at the point, well-taken, it's, but there is, there is a connection within the plan, but, thank you.
All right, goal four?
Goal four is probably a continuation of work that has started and has come before you, but keeping very much in focus the middle school program review, and there's a lot of work that has been tackled with that already, but certainly other recommendations that are still in need of forward progress. In particular, as called out here, you can see around MTSS, Ms. Elliott talked earlier about the data meetings, the many data meetings that she's had already there. This is an area of focus that is very deeply connected to the middle school program review, and I know that this is an important area for many around this table, as it is for us, so I've included it in here. Happy to have any comments, questions, or feedback on this.
I won't go first. Are you sure? I love goals. I would love to see, as a part of this, like, as an outsider looking in, I'm hoping that goal one and the walkthroughs, is that three?
Three.
Yep.
Are like huge here, like, this is a big piece of this work at the middle school, so I'm hoping that while we're doing this work in all the schools, I understand that, but we're doing additional walkthroughs at the middle school, we're doing more of that. Like, I would love to see a small, like, almost like a committee as a part of this goal. One, so that it's not falling all, I know it says here, work closely with the principal and assistant superintendent, but it's, it's really three P, I mean, that's, that's a lot for, I would love to see a, more of a group working on some of this with you, where there could be a little bit of delegating, so we could start to see some real, like, feedback and what's happening and what's, I don't know, does that make sense?
Yeah.
David?
It does.
Mr. Turner?
I think I want to expand on what you're saying, Dr. Bryson. So one way I would think about what you're saying is, in addition to the district leadership team, and, and doing the walkthroughs at the middle school, having staff doing instructional reviews cross-house, cross-grade, within the same academic discipline, might be a way to help them build more of a common approach. And, and, again, the same thing you said earlier on the instructional walkthrough, wow, that's a great way to do this, and also have you thought about that, you know? So some of those things of cross-learning amongst the houses and the grades, because sometimes we do hear about some differences amongst the houses and amongst the grades, just on basic sorts of things like homework, you know, and so having those types of conversations, and they may already be happening in some form, but having them as instruct, in the same form and structure as the DLT is doing the instructional walkthroughs, having teachers do it in the same way, and again, that may be not a reasonable ask within the school year, and I don't, I don't know, I would defer to the judgment on that, but it might be a way to take that to a higher level to align with what you were suggesting, Dr. Bryson.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments, questions?
Well, I appreciate your feedback, I'll certainly try my best to capture all of that, and again, you know, ultimately, these are goals that I want you to be comfortable approving, and so please, if you think of anything else after the meeting, welcome to pass that along, so thank you.
All right. Do we, brings us to subcommittee reports? Are there any to report?
Um.
All right, hearing the subcommittee reports. We have no correspondence tonight. Future dates, notable items, October 7-
Future dates, notable items, October 17th is a visioning session for the Wildwood Project. October 18th is a meeting of the Wildwood School Building Committee. October 24th, again, we have a visioning session for the MSBA project. October 25th is our next regular session, school committee meeting. October 8th is a community forum for the Wildwood School Building Project. And October 15th, sorry, November 15th will be our regular session meeting here at 7:00 PM. And if there's, uh, Dr. Bryson?
Can I ask a question? Do, so I saw the note about the 8th, which I replied that I will, I'm going to. Do you want us to go, would it be helpful if there were more school committee members at some of these other envisioning sessions? Because I saw the comment there, and I'm just trying to, like, I haven't been a part of that from the, from the onset, and so is it too late for, would it just be helpful to have some of us sort of try and get to some of these prior to the 8th? So that we have, do you see what I'm saying?
I, I do, um.
There was a message sent that was like, if you don't do it from the beginning, don't do it. But, so I think, so if we didn't sign up, we haven't been doing it, but now I'm hearing that maybe you want us to do it. So I guess if we could just have some clarity around what would be helpful to you in the process?
I think, um, definitely, if you're able to attend the 8th, I think that that would be great. It is, we have, um, to answer your question, is it too late to jump into the visioning sessions? The answer has shifted a little bit, and I shifted in the sense of, at the outset, it was really the sense of continuity that's necessary from the scaffolding standpoint of all of the four different sessions. But if you are, if anyone here is welcome or interested in joining one of the visioning sessions, you, you can. It's not too late. I did clarify that. But, you know, I, I don't think, if you're interested, certainly jump in. At the same time, though, I would, um, uh, would, would certainly want you to know that all of the results from those meetings, all four, will be consolidated into a report that will be made widely available to the community at large. So, um, you know, you, you, you have a lot of time and commitment, obviously, with our meetings here alone. You're welcome to, I don't, I don't think it's critical. I think, yeah, I'll pause there.
So, can I just clarify? So, I understand we'll get all the information. Is it helpful to have school committee members present at some of these other meetings? Should we try and do our best to have representation at some of these meetings? Forget about our busy schedules and the fact that we're volunteers and all the, is it not a good thing if someone isn't there to represent the school committee? That's really what I'm asking.
I think it could be, I, I don't think it could hurt. I don't think it'd occur, yeah.
Actually, along those lines, something that I would like to very, very quickly address. We are going to get this meeting done before 10:00. The, so one of the items I read, so there's a, um, next Wednesday is the next meeting of the Wildwood School Building Committee. I will not, I am the school committee representative on the committee. I cannot attend, because I'm going to be traveling for, for work. Well, but I'm going to be in a plane, so I-
Which date is that? So it's the-
October 18th.
Eighteenth.
Wednesday, the 18th. I'm going to be traveling on an airplane, will not be able to attend. And I wanted to see if, I don't know that we have like a formal alternate on the committee. Melissa used to be, Melissa used to be the alternate and had attended most, most of the meetings with me. But, um, I think if, if someone were free and available to just kind of sit in on that meeting, that would be beneficial, so. You can, you know, talk to me and talk to, you know, Tracy afterwards, you know, if you don't know your schedule now. But it would be nice to have someone who could possibly attend that in my stead.
And it says here, but you're saying it's virtual?
I think I moved to virtual today. It was just on the, because the agenda was originally in person. It's to accommodate the engineer consultant's presentation.
Okay, great, thanks. And I think there's nothing else, so. I would entertain, entertain a motion to- We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Dr. Bryson, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night. Good night, everybody. Out before 10:00.